We didn't.
We thought we were losing our time.
I probably did. Just so you think.
We knew it.
You have other questions?
No.
You guys have your questions?
We have.
Okay, good evening, everybody. We'd like to welcome everyone to the October 3rd, 2022 City Council Work Session. Glad to have that. This is my sister put that. I don't know what I got to do with moving here. So we would like to ask everyone to silence any electronic devices. We've got quite a busy agenda. Nice one to get through as quickly as we can. Item A, City Park Stream Buffer Maintenance. Bob Patterson and Amy Park.
Thank you, Mayor Butler and Council. I'm going to give you an update on our efforts at City Park to make the buffer look a lot better. A little bit of history on that. If you recall, the Little Almonds Creek was deemed impaired by DEQ. And about the same time, the Ecosystem Enhancement Program approached the city about doing a restoration project in City Park, which would help to stabilize the stream bank and also promote some water quality benefits. And so the city entered into an agreement with the Ecosystem Enhancement Program, which was a division of the state that essentially does mitigation for impacts created by DFT projects. They tried to do them in the same general area, try to do the restoration project in the same general area that's the impact of. And so through that project, the city dedicated a hundred-foot-wide conservation easement to the state. And the state hired an engineer to design the stream restoration project and then hired a contractor to do that project. And that was completed initially planned in 2012. And then the vegetation started to grow and we started getting complaints on the jungle that it kind of created because it was a much different appearance to what City Park used to look like. At one point, it was almost manicured down to the tops of the bank. When we had some new stormwater rules coming and needed that there were buffer requirements coming, the city moved back their maintenance from the creek banks, but still allowed a lot of it to grow up. The conservation easement was very restrictive. We were not allowed to go in and essentially remove any vegetation except for invasive, non-desirable plants. Couldn't cut trees, couldn't prune trees without permission. And so that hindered our ability to make the buffer look good. And by the subsequent, the Ecosystem Enhancement Program became the Division of Medication Services. And through our subsequent conversations with them to try to work with the buffer and then eventually the buffer was, the easement was released. They admitted that this type of project isn't suitable for an urban park, urban setting. They're used to doing these more rural areas, the vegetation selection and also just the type of work. So we also had public safety concerns. There was a murder in the park. Other crime that was involved with vegetation blocking affect distances. Senator Gunn worked together, Public Safety Exemption Rule, that was effective for all buffers across the state. That the local law enforcement agency could declare a buffer public safety issue. And that would relax some of the buffer requirements, buffer maintenance requirements in the case of Jordan Lake buffers. We were still hindered by the conservation easement. Senator Gunn, Representative Riedel, Representative Ross worked to provide funding in the state budget to offset the mitigation credits that were associated with the project, I believe it was $837,000. And the state subsequently released that easement in early 2020. So we've worked since that time on an iterative approach with a specialized contractor to go in and remove vegetation. And some of that is seasonal. And so I'll turn this over to Amy and she can get into the particular details of that effort. Unless there's any questions at this point.
So the current size of the buffer project is we, like Bob said, we contracted with Resource Environmental Solutions. They are a specialized contractor. They have biologists on staff who can quickly identify beneficial vegetation versus vegetation we don't want to remove. And they have a good idea of density requirements for a functional buffer. So it was a good fit for us to bring our voice together of having a functional riparian buffer to hold the stream bank in place and decrease pollutants getting into Little Almonds while also maintaining a line of sight for safety concerns. So before we hired Res, we did write a maintenance plan to help with any concerns DEQ would have. We wanted to stay on the good side. We do have a good relationship with DEQ. So we got the maintenance plan approved. The maintenance plan is very similar to what we're doing at Willow Brook Park right now, except we're working backwards. So it's a little bit slower at City Park because we have to work with what's already grown out first and what's been fresh. So it was, there was actually four phases to the riparian buffer maintenance. Phase one was a large tree removal project that was incorporated on the entire western part of City Park. That included outside of the buffer as well as inside the buffer. There was approximately 35 or 36 large trees removed that were dead, diseased or dying in the buffer. And I believe about 90 removed outside of the riparian buffer. And then the next phase was really getting into just the riparian buffer work with that contractor. So the first phase was going out identifying any invasive or undesirable poisonous vegetation or advise things that are really adding to the look that we are nominating for at City Park. So that was the first phase. I went and identified, cut down and treated for invasives. Once they were finished with that, we took another look at it and realized it's still, you can't see through it. Still not meeting that goal. So the second phase was a density control. So that was really taking out just that focus of invasive vegetation and also looking at native vegetation. So it could be a sycamore tree, a native beneficial tree, but there could be two sycamore trees within repeat of each other. That's not necessary. So then that density control really went in and evaluated how many species are in this particular radius and what's too much. So we went with like a 12 to 15-foot spacing with large trees. And they just completed that today. Actually, they were supposed to complete it on Friday, but couldn't. So that portion is finished and now the last portion, the last phase is going into ongoing maintenance for the undergrowth. So everything that's going to continue to grow up, they're going to come back out monthly or as the city requests them to come out and do cutting, trimming, just like we do at Willow Brook of the undergrowth and any treatment of invasives that continue to come up. Later on, I'm sorry, I just keep talking. Later on in October and then going into November, we're also going to get down, all the way down to the top of the stream channel. There's areas where there is beneficial vegetation right on the bank and areas that's really holding the bank in place that we want to be more selective. However, when you're looking across the stream, you can see your line of sight is still impaired. So what we're going to do when it's healthier in the fall to prune. So we're going to wait until it's better for the plants, go in and then limb up and also selectively remove some vegetation that's down all the way down by the stream. But the main thing was going in and getting the density under control. So I just want to show you all some pictures, what it looks like. The pictures don't do it justice. So this is in 2016. Even though the buffer was planted in 2012, 2016 was really when you started to notice. As I was going through the pictures anyway, it seemed like 2016 was very dense. That's when you could really tell maintenance wasn't there. Here is 2021. So this picture, I believe, is prior to native removal. And another picture from 2021, also prior to the native removal. And when I walked through there, I mean, you could hardly walk through. As you can see right here, this is the baller. You can't even begin to see the stream. So this is August 2022. And keep in mind that this ugly portion right here where everything's dead, they, when we took these pictures, they had just sprayed herbicide for invasives and undesirable vegetation on the ground. So it hadn't had a chance to really fall down and get raped out. So that was in August. And then this is September 21. This is a section that they nearly completed. They just had to come back and pull out the small trees and limbs that they had cut yet. So there's still some stuff on the ground. But just to give you some perspective, like over here is the shelter and I'm standing on the opposite side of the street. There was, you couldn't see it across the street before. This is me standing, so this is the culver that's coming underneath over the road. I'm standing on the opposite side of the stream again and you can see the house across the road now. This portion, you can see the small building right here. Then the park, again, I'm standing on the opposite side of the street. The baller's right here. So you can see how clear it is all the way down into the buffer. And these small, the small saplings that are coming up, those are going to be taken care of through the ongoing maintenance. And some more pictures. This is the portion that's by Church Street. So this is getting, I'm horrible spatial. Maybe 100 feet away from Church Street, looking towards it. So you can't see pretty much through. But this is an example of an area down by the stream that we're going to be going in and selectively removing and pruning. It's really close to the stream bank, but it's also very important that we are selective with what we do there. That way we're not getting that undercutting and erosion that we have before. So this is just a schedule of what we're doing right now. So as I said, we're going to be selectively pruning towards the end of October, through November. And that'll really open up the line of sight in the areas where it's still very bushy down by the stream. There's some debris in the stream channel that's just slightly and also adds to any flooding that occurs at City Park. So we're going to hire a contractor and get the debris out of the stream. And then as Res or Resource Environmental Solutions was removing a lot of the plants in the buffer, we saw additional large trees that we'd like to get removed. That was, they're not very, they're not large tree company really. So we're going to call in the same company that did our large tree removal project at the beginning and have them remove the additional trees and any other dead or dead or diseased trees. And then again, the long-term maintenance will be trimming the undergrowth, fruit load. And that's going to, as we open up some areas for sunlight to come in, that's something that we're really going to have to keep an eye on. Things are going to start growing pretty fast. But I think a lot of what we're going to get is still grass, which is invasive and we don't want anyway. So we'll keep an eye on it. And then if there's any, we didn't want to jump ahead and say we want to go ahead and plan in the scope of work to replant any place. But we're just going to keep an eye on areas where we did have a removal. And if there's any concerns with the stream bank removing and there's a major lack of vegetation, if there's, we'll do selective planting somewhere to Willow Brook in those areas. But we're not even going to address that until we see that there's going to be an issue. Any questions?
Will anyone from Wally come out and come behind you guys to review what we've done?
From where?
DEQ.
They could, I mean, potentially. We haven't been told that they are going to do that. They're actually very receptive of our plan. But I can say that when DEQ comes out for their inspections for, like say it's a city project and I can't be the one to approve a buffer application, DEQ will come out to look at their projects that they're reviewing and then sometimes they'll ask to go to other places. So it's a possibility, but we haven't been told.
Yeah, initially, when there was talk about the release of the conservation easement, there was a lot of concern by DEQ staff that we were just going to go in and ignore buffer rules and clear-cut everything. So we went through a process and met with them several times to assure them that we were still wanting to maintain a buffer to protect water quality, but we also wanted to enhance the aesthetics and make it look something that will be suitable for City Park. They seemed to be satisfied once we had the conversation.
Yeah, and I can say from an ecologist's standpoint that I think we're going to enhance the function of this buffer by doing this because we are going to be able to focus, really focus on the beneficial vegetation and allow that to grow. So we'll take care of those. But having, you know, a dense area of the same species is adding benefit. So I can say that's an enhancement.
Their concern now would be the cost of Jordan Lake rivers or buffer apartments anyway, not the cost of the conservation easement.
Right. The conservation easement is totally released. They don't have any, that has no bearing anymore.
All right. Any other questions or comments?
Can we get Mayor? We just wanted to thank Amy and Bob for working and also taking this app. You know, we had that concern at the City Council meeting and there's been a lot of work that's been done on this project. We just want to make sure that everybody is updated and aware that this is a part of it.
At some point, it would, just a suggestion, it would probably be a good idea to have Senator Gunn and Representative Riedel and Representative Ross, former Mayor Ross as well, because he was a part of this, let him see what we've done. It would be nice, I think, to call in, set up a town to take them through and see. Because they've asked me on several occasions about it. So I think you're going to be able to face out what we've done.
We'll be glad to hear that.
Okay, thank you, Bob. Our next item, item B, Downtown Water and Sewer Replacement Project and Streetscape Update.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Well, this is Logan. Go ahead and get started. So just as reminded, the city received 20 million dollars from the state budget to replace downtown water and sewer. Now, mind you, that project was very nondescript. So not specific water and sewer lines. It was just this $10 million lump of money for downtown water and sewer lines. That money was tied to federal money. So it was with the other requirements that we've received at the city level as well. We were to be contracted for those funds by December 31, 2024. And those monies were to be spent by December 31, 2026. So in identifying what that would be, we put out an RFQ for consultants to respond to for this project. But it's going to be very intense, very labor-intensive, very coordination issues. So we kind of felt like it was best to have a single consultant that looked at these issues. We received responses back from the RFQ. So kind of the next step now is to kind of provide the city council with some options so that we can better define a scope with ultimately the selected consultant for this project. Options can range and so we want to kind of get council's feedback as we move forward. So just to kind of give a brief overview, downtown district is 16 blocks. So you've kind of got that area shaded into downtown. As what's defined is our downtown district. Now, again, as the state budget, we were not specific on water and sewer lines on any particular street. Just downtown in general. So downtown, we have water and sewer lines existing in this nature. And so the question becomes, at what level of project do you want to go for? And I'll kind of call it A, B and C for the level of projects. Level A would be you're just replacing the minimum. If you touch that water and sewer line, you end up in a trench there. If you touch that service, you would have a trench over that service. That essentially would give you a finished product that looks something realistically to that on the screen. As many services and lines that you have downtown, particularly in our more commercialized districts, it's going to look very much like you built a ladder in the middle of the road. So it's certainly not going to improve the look of downtown. That's level A. And again, that's just impacting things that you touch. Level B of that project would be if you replace pretty much everything that exists currently in downtown. So that's not just the water and sewer panels or the sidewalk panels that you impacted because it has a meter in it. But that would be replacing all the sidewalk panels. Or resurfacing all the streets, not just the trenches that you've impacted through your utility cuts. That's going to get you something that, again, looks like what you have now, but everything would be freshened and brand-new. Level C would be even above that to where you had enhanced replacements, whether you were looking at different streetscape areas, different curb extensions. So similar products to what we did around what's now the food hall or what's around cities and Burlington Beer Works, where you had this enhanced level of replacements. And we've walked through some of the things that we think would make sense from a staff perspective. So curb extensions, for example, you've got particular intersections that it would make more appropriate where you have either high pedestrian or high commercial uses. And just as an example, just overlaying some of what it might look like around the Paramount. But you can come in here where you have parking spaces and on-street parking and take the curb lines out around those. So you're not affecting travel lanes or anything like that. It makes it a shorter distance for pedestrians to cross. It gives the pedestrians a better sightline if cars are parked here for them to come to the edge of the car where they parked before they get into the street. And you have some areas that you could do enhanced green space. These might not be tall trees, but they would at least be green space. Some planting areas like we have at Burlington Beer Works intersection there at Main Street. Another idea that we had on staff here was the intersection here at Main Street where you could come in and you could do a raised intersection and have that whole intersection at basically curb level where you had a tabletop ramp, so to speak, in all the approaches. These are more pedestrian-friendly. I know we made this a three-way stop some years ago. If you sit out there on a busy night, you can count the number of cars that don't see the stop signs and then still go through.
Or the worst, that'd be more.
Yeah. And it's not necessarily the fault. It's just very hard to see those stop signs based on where we could put them. So again, that's just an enhancement that could be done as part of the project. Different areas, again, this would be, we would work with a consultant once we had a game plan. The consultant would certainly go through the downtown corporation, the different businesses, go through Morgan and Aaron to kind of see where strategically these enhancements could be made and where they made the most sense to incorporate it in an all-inclusive project. The idea here is you don't want to go through with your water and sewer project and then you don't like the way it looks and you've already disrupted everybody once and you decide later on you want to come back. You've got kind of this opportunity to do everything that you would like to do in one project. It will be disruptive to businesses. I mean, it's going to be a block-by-block construction project. You're already going to have to coordinate street closures versus sidewalk panels that are being impacted with water meters. That can all be coordinated out, but you really only want to do that once. You don't want to finish your $10 million project and then think, well, we don't like the way this street looks now. We want to do a streetscape project at that point in time. So it's kind of the opportunity now to kind of talk about what level you would want to do enhancements, if any at all, and how you want to incorporate those into a single project. And just to give you some ideas on... So this is a street view for giving me for the level of detail. So this is what it exists now. So this is out on front of Danny's campus. You've got a high spodge of sidewalk repairs. You've got meters that kind of currently look up and down the street. If you just do the minimum, this is, let's see if I can get it a little bit. This is what it would look like if you just repair the minimum. You know, you're only replacing sidewalk panels that have water meters in them or sewer cleanouts. You would have trench cuts that come to those locations. If you wanted to do a complete project, you would basically have all new sidewalks. You would have all new resurfacing. You would have a complete project that looked complete and looked brand-new once you got done. If you wanted to do some enhancements, that's going to look more like what you see at the corner there at Burlington Beer Works where you have curb extensions. It could allow for sidewalk seating if that commercial entity that was near that intersection weren't such. But it allows for some green space at intersections. You have additional tree grates. It just gives you an opportunity to make some enhancements if that's what council wants. So now we just kind of want to give some guidance as to what your level or appetite for this product looks like. We certainly want to define it with the scope, with the consultant we select, so that we're dealing with one designer. Now, that designer may have different consultants on any design project. But that way, we've got one consultant that's kind of the lead on everything. You've got one construction project that's disruptive as it may be, is disrupted once from beginning to end. Now, the biggest thing that we're talking about, again, when it comes down to dollars, let's see how big I can get this without it disappearing. So again, option A is just you do the minimum. That's the $10 million from the state level. Option B is you're completely redoing everything as it exists right now. Essentially, that's $4.3 million more than the $10 million from the state project. We've identified those enhancements at some level like we talked about. We've identified those enhancements at some level, like we talked about. Curb extensions, not necessarily 20 specific locations, but you may have 20 in your whole downtown district. You raised the intersection at front and main, additional tree grates. We discussed the opportunity to have DuCarl come in and install some meters and receptacles at strategic intersections that would allow for downtown events to not have to run generators if you were bringing in food trucks, if you wanted to set up a speaker or whatever the case may be, to have some opportunities for those. Sidewalk replacements on the opposite side of the street. So if you think about something as simple as Lexington Avenue, you've got water and sewer lines that are impacting one side of the street but it may not impact the other side. Do you want to do the other side when it's not impacted? And your different design costs for those elements. We're looking at another low over $2 million for potential enhancements.
So Todd, so if we wanted to do the Cadillac version, it'd be 10 plus four plus two?
Yeah, so when you're rounding up, you're at about $7 million for if you want to go all out and say we want everything that we can possibly get in this downtown district. Now, we talked about, we hadn't talked about funding sources either. Realistically, we've talked with Craig and Nolan and Bob. Some of these might be eligible for water resources fund balance because you're being impacted by a water resource project in water and sewer. Then you might have some that generally wouldn't be eligible for, potentially, from a water and resources fund balance because they're just true enhancements. So those will be coming from the general fund balance. And those may be opportunities that I know we've got some agenda items coming up tonight with economic development and some of the pots of money that we wanted to look at setting aside. Certainly could be one of these downtown could be a pot of money that you want to set aside for those. And that also doesn't interest any other potential fundings. So all of the consultants that submitted RFQs have a vast experience with going out and getting other funding. So they may, once you get into identifying certain projects, especially with some of the spending bills that are either being discussed or recently passed, there may be other pots of money that they could apply for. And we not be on the hook for all of these, but that's unknown at this point. I think right now, what I would tell you is potentially if you went all in, you would have either from general fund or water resources funds about $7 million worth of increased enhancements over what the minimum would be for that state project.
So just a breakdown of what those accounts are?
Yeah, and these are things that would be in the state budget, things that potentially could be in water resources and things that potentially could be in general funds. And again, these aren't hard, vast, this is the way it has to be. But you would be looking at, you know, possibly four and a half from the water resources, the 2.6 from the general funds. And that may be more specific breakdown once you got into a true design. I think based on your appetite for this, you'd certainly have the consultant, we'd kind of, we'd work with staff and the downtown group to kind of bring back a concept and see if you were happy with it and then to talk about funding before it went out the bid as far as the level that you wanted to include. But ideally, we would like to come back to council next month with a scope and a professional design contract for the consultant so that they can get started because again, a lot of it's driven by not only other downtown projects for the Paramount, but also for the timeline constraints that the state money is tied up with.
So basically, we've got fund balance in the enterprise fund and water and sewer fund that we look back for replacement of depreciating assets anyway. That's what you're saying, that four and a half million would kind of... The state's supplying it then with $10 million. We can pull four and a half out of that to go towards the project. Is that kind of...
I see.
So general fund, we're talking about 2.7 billion, based on these.
And my pots of, you know, the next agenda items, you're talking about economic development funds, that could be part of the piece you want to do for downtown if you wanted to, but...
Well, we had talked about economic development. Economic development in general, the airport and opportunity centers. So...
Well, Mayor, and don't make any junk, but the original discussion about Paramount was part of the ARP excess funds. And since we're now looking at going out for banking bid for those, that kind of frees up four and a half of the set size.
Yeah, well, yeah, I think we were under the impression that was already that way. Or at least I was. So, and then I guess there would be a A, B, and C, there's probably a D conversation that we need to have, but we're going to talk about this, at least in my eyes. We do, first of all, in my opinion, if we're going to do the minimum, it's going to be horrible. We've got to do level B regardless, or it's going to be, this is going to be horrible. And then I think with everything going on down, level C makes a lot of sense. But now we're going to have everything really, really nice, but some, we're going to have some facades that are going to be attention. You know, has there been any conversation about sure, some of the facade grants that downtown corporation gives out? And we, staff had that discussion.
We've not gone there, but however, as part of the economic development fund, we could definitely put money towards that, you know. That we've right now got it set aside as $5 million. And we do not have that specifically laid out of exactly what the $5 million is meant for. So we can be as flexible as we need to be with that.
Because we're talking about in the next four years having a significant transformation of downtown. You don't get any opportunities.
Mayor, right now, there's $100,000 allocated to the grants budget for the Burlington Downtown Corporation. There is a specific facade grant that has a limited amount, mostly focused on entrances and the audits and signage that goes along there. But that grant money can be supplemented. There is some in arrears that we utilize some to purchase Christmas decorations. But there is money available with that line item. And then certainly, as Craig and others have mentioned, there's that economic development fund that could supplement further that grant money.
We're referencing all the intersections in this block. We're referencing Front Street, ticklers that come down because you've got, obviously, you're going to have the depot, you've got where you are now with Beer Works, and you've got the Paramount. Work has been done down at the food hall to some degree. So are we talking about each intersection now trying to do something this nature?
I think potentially, I think that would ultimately come from, if, one, what the concept was and then working through downtown businesses, which made sense to have some enhancements at every intersection. I think the ones that staff kind of looked at were these kind of six intersections here. So the five that are in circles, plus the one here at the Paramount, kind of made the most sense from a commercial kind of district standpoint. Whether you need all of them, I'm not really sure. Whether all the businesses would be, you know, on board to them. I think these are intersections that you could certainly accomplish that without losing parking spaces. I mean, I think it's very realistic that a coffee shop values the parking spaces in front of their business. Although, in this example, the one parking space in front of the Paramount may not be crucial. You might do a little bit more there because that one space isn't crucial to the Paramount's business. So I think you would work through each intersection, work with the downtown businesses that are there and see what works and what makes sense. But those are the ones that, at least from a commercial standpoint, made the most obvious sense. And also looking at foot traffic, where is foot traffic coming and going from? Because again, anytime you do these intersection and curb extensions, it certainly makes your crossing a lot safer, both from a line of sight and from a distance, the crossing in the street. Not that our downtown streets have, you know, huge long crossings like you find in other places. But that's also a consideration too, of where your foot traffic would be. You know, so even coming from, you know, lab core businesses are kind of walking these corridors or coming up to your commercial establishments for food or after-work type of things.
Quick question, Todd. Are you, up at the depot, the little tabletop, is that just the one or these other five intersections you think about doing tabletops?
You certainly could do them at others. I think this is the one that made the most sense. Maybe the one here at the other end of Main Street kind of makes sense because it's not a signalized intersection. Typically, you do that both for traffic coming and for pedestrian crossings. But historically, from an engineering standpoint, you look at non-site signalized intersections for those type of improvements. Generally, at signalized intersections, you have some stop controls already. So those would not be the normal ones that you would look at a raised intersection for installation of.
I would think the Davis Main Street, I would certainly encourage that. Because I walk a lot downtown and when people making light right there at Zach's, they got to hit a steam and you got to be watching out. They come pretty fast to there. And that tabletop would slow that down a lot. The others, you know, with signals, you got a, you know, you got a better chance getting crossed up across the street. But I would, well, anyway, in talking about this, I would certainly encourage that. I don't know what the expense of that would be, but it would, I think it would help in the traffic calming, considerably. I really do.
Yeah, I think this certainly made a lot of sense. This one at the other end of Main Street that's not signalized and you have free flowing coming through, that might make sense as well if you wanted to look at that. But I think that kind of gets into the details of the design and what your appetite is. I think based on the estimate, we had, it's about $115,000 for that raised intersection. And again, you're getting a discount somewhat on it because you're already coming through that intersection with work with the water and sewer lines. So if you said today, I just want to raise that intersection, it'd probably be 50 to 75% more of that. But just because you've already got some added cost that's associated with that with the water and sewer replacement. So the more you do now, the more you are benefiting from the state's $10 million as opposed to a standalone project.
Well, the front and main example that you put up there is spot on. Because that is a dangerous intersection. Absolutely. I'm down there a lot and even late transit will go through there, you know, as they're getting to their spot. And you're down there for dinner or if he's on an evening spread, second order, this may be working.
Yeah, when I was with the city of Greensboro, we did this very same design, which is right there in front of the Bible Park, which is now at the corner of the Tanger Center. But it's a raised intersection for the very same thing, that you had a lot of foot traffic coming into the Bible Park and that was, it was just an intersection that was similar to this, that it was easy for cars to kind of get ahead of speed and not be paying attention to there.
Pedestrians see the stop sign, so they think, well, they got to stop.
Right, right.
And it's not, sight and visibility in that area is a little compact. It's difficult.
Yeah, overall, I would certainly like, you know, look strongly consider, you know, the enhanced package and that sort of. That very minimum, I don't know, I think it's going to have a patchwork and like Todd said, it's going to look like a ladder.
Yeah, I think from staff, we would certainly say at the very minimum, I don't think anybody's going to be happy if you just get option A. I think it's going to look like a ladder work and it's going to be kind of, I think the sentiment would be, I was disrupted for this long and it still looks like this.
It's like buying a new couch and the rest of the furniture looks that way.
Yeah.
Just grab my finger. We've got that part. Yeah, well, I mean, I would think, I would think, given the fact that we've got a $10 million head start and really, you could argue $14 million because we were able to use money that we've already put back for the very thing the $10 million is going to pay for, we would probably be wise to do the street skating initiative.
And I think now, and just bear in mind that this is not hard, kind of pre-decision we're making tonight. I think now we just need kind of guidance to develop a scope and a design package. And then we certainly have iterations where we're bringing back to you kind of this preliminary design before we get to a final design. So there's multiple input points, not just tonight, but we just need to know the direction to proceed with the consultant.
If we saw a level C with street skating, the street skating piece was sort of à la carte, so we could really put a dollar amount to what we're getting and see if this, is it going to meet the activities?
Yeah, and I think, not to say that design costs aren't something to themselves, but they're small in the whole big project. So it would not be unlike what you did with some of the rec projects where you kind of did all apart, let's get design for a pickleball court and a shelter and some covering over the tennis courts. But let's look at the design, look at the final price tag, and then we can kind of pick and choose which we like. I mean, that certainly is the most flexible going forward. And so, is there a possibility that you pay for a design that you end up not using? Yes, but I think that's somewhat smaller in terms of what you're getting long-term.
That design's always there if you don't want to use it now.
Right. It's not completely wasted, so... But I think that would be, you know, again, just an appetite for council on the direction to go with our design and scoping services to bring you back in the near future is what we're looking for.
Mayor, I would suggest level C we proceed.
Everybody good with that?
Yep.
Okay, thank you, Todd. Next is, I have a same discussion, economic development fund, so city manager, quick ring that and double curve.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council. Wanted to really kind of come back and this is kind of dovetails to what we've just been talking about. We had set aside at the June 2nd meeting, $10.5 million to be looked at using the ARP surplus fund. And again, remind you, we were looking at guiding principles. And I think our former interim city manager, Dave Keed, did just a fabulous job on this. Needs to be transformative, it needs to have a good investment, use of long-term and produce lasting benefits. And we need to be able to leverage monies on different projects. And this is, you know, the first recommendation is, we have gone back to, is the street skate. Is to use those funds, $2.6 million of that for the street skate because it is long-term, it is leveraging of, or funds, it's leveraging state dollars, it's also leveraging our water and sewer fund balance. So we do appreciate your support on that. The second thing we wanted to do is look at the economic development fund. And it really is, in working with Peter and Nolan and having some really good conversational staff, we wanted to have a little bit of flexibility of this. And one of the things that Peter is going to do later is talk about some ideas we have on, not just industrial development, but commercial development as well, existing industry as well. How we can best utilize those funds all throughout the city. How can we look at different quarters such as Webb Avenue and look at East Burlington as well, you know. We are focusing on downtown now, but how can we use those funds to look at the entire city? So Peter is going to go for that plan in a little bit, some recommendations that we have on that. And then the second thing we talked about is still the airport master plan, which was in the original recommendation that David had. But that would be changed from $3 million to $2.9 million. And that would get us to the $10.5 million in funds.
What was the economic development fund?
Uh, $5 million. I think my numbers on the sheet are wrong. So it's $5 million for economic development, $2.6 for downtown street skate initiative, and then $2.9 for the airport master plan. Again, and the airport master plan is very similar to what David had originally. And I think what the consensus of the board was to move that forward, looking at that as the asset that it is for.
The only thing that I would like to see us break out of that $5 million is to be sure that a certain portion of that is purposely dedicated for opportunities. We had talked about that, everyone called this being a key piece of what we were looking to do. Is everyone calling that?
Let's repeat that again.
The $5 million that we're talking about for economic development, have a portion of that specifically dedicated for the opportunity and opportunities in a project or you look in and opportunities. And the rest of that, that would be Western Electric, that area.
She's talking about opportunities that are defined.
Yeah.
The way they're, you know, not creating our own.
Correct. We've already identified.
Yeah.
Yep, they're created.
And another idea we did have is this gives a little bit of flexibility as well. One of the things that industries are looking for now are site ready, or sites that are ready, shovel-ready sites. So this, we could use some of those funds that the board chose, purchase property, make sure we have water and sewer, have a pad ready site, and do our own shell building or just a pad ready site that we would have, that we would control moving forward. Right now, when we're working with different property owners, it's really difficult sometimes to make sure which sites are available and who has control, especially as quickly as industries want to move today. So there's just a lot of different flexibilities that we were looking at with the $5 million.
Well, if you did something along those lines, it would actively be, that wouldn't be an expense. That would be something that would be, we'd create income from.
It would.
At least sort of a revolving.
Right, right. But it would give us a little bit of flexibility as well, especially on the marketing side as well.
Yeah. I think if that's the route we're going to go with, it really wouldn't matter if it was specifically dedicated because the money's not going anywhere. It's going to be paid back and then re-rolled.
Just a little more.
Correct.
Right, and let me first say, you know, clarify, anything that we spend from these funds, we come back to the board for your final approval. This is not anything that the staff has authority to go out and to make deals or expenditures that were not fully approved by the city.
I'm inching towards this, that's our own site. We just keep moving towards it, we don't go any further than that.
Well, you know, that has enormous advantages if you have the resources and can make it work. Because you take the middleman, old person, old company out of it quite a year, if you do that. If you look at it, and I must say this can be an enterprise fund because it won't be, but if you look at it, the return on investment, that makes it somewhat easier to take it. And I know Daniel probably likes this. That makes it a little bit easier to take it out of reserve funds or go ahead and take that and actually pick, take what it may be used for. If you have the right opportunity to come along. Need the right opportunity, the right site. Becomes the key here.
It behaves like the home fund.
Yeah, becomes the key. When you can get something and then move it forward, not leave it at the time, it may be, you know, it will be immediate. But the return on investment may end up being equal to the expenditures appearing time.
Well, and Peter, correct me if I'm wrong, the number one issue right now are sites that are water and sewer that are available for purchase now.
Yes. What I thought. Ambiguity. And it's, we get leads from different sources. The main source is the Economic Development Partnership. And they have gotten to the tactic of highlighting must be shovel-ready in your submission. So even if something has planned water and sewer, like many of our sites have, it doesn't have a great impact. It's not necessarily shovel-ready. It hasn't necessarily got its entitlements from the local government. So as Craig mentioned, things are moving much faster. The investment before there's even a company interested is becoming more and more important and expected from the private sector. So yes, we need to, we need ready sites, ready buildings, and there aren't a lot of either right now. And not just in Burlington, statewide, we've had a really successful run at economic development. And the kitty or the inventory is very low.
There was actually an article in a state publication that actually we made it out. Put them on, where we're heading now, potential economic development sites have been reduced dramatically. So, well, if you can come up with one, it surprises.
Yeah.
Especially where we're located, so close to the others that are now being dotted up. There's going to have to be some spinoffs, so there are others you're going to think about. So you're just looking for a basic direction for us on that?
We are, and basically, you know, this is a concept right now. And this kind of gives us a little bit of leeway to go out and start exploring these and saying, hey, council has a conceptual, they are tend to believe given a head doc for the idea. And then once we have the idea, that will give us a little bit of direction to go out and really put pen to paper and start doing some things and really come back to you with some solid recommendations.
How is this different from Site 1 and Site 2 that we look?
So I think what we're talking about here is the difference in allowing the private sector to do the flow and dictate the availability of sites and go through their development processes versus that being a municipally or public process. So if we were to, because local governments are permitted to, you know, purchase and develop land for industrial and commercial purposes. What I think Craig uses a really good language is you retain control over the project. So in our cases right now, when I'm working with private landowners, they're setting the price, they're setting the terms of sale. And in many cases, they're determining what's available or not, what's on the market or not. If we have a site or a building that is under the city's control, then we can choose who the tenant's going to be, what fixtures or finish is going to be in that property, what style building, what size it is, what sector, industry sector we want to target with it, and then of course, how ready it is and when it's ready. So all of that would be under the control of what the city is developer, us taking it through the process versus relying on the private sector. And what we've been, I don't know if it's lucky or fortunate or if the timing's been good, but we've been starting that process by funding infrastructure, by doing site studies for private property. And the private sector has responded and moved forward with development in some cases. So I think we've been fortunate to see like the Steritech project, for example, when developing their own supplier park. I mean, that's four additional industrial sites that'll be brought, you know, out of the ground. Of course, on a private schedule, but then will require public funding. So as we've moved closer and closer to this, the private sector's been responding and doing more development. But still, there is not enough. We're still missing opportunities through not having sites and buildings ready for sale or for development.
So right now, we just have sites at the, and that's how we go with it. Site A, Site 1, that's it. But we have no, we've got no plan, it's just we've identified it.
Well, I think we've, our plan has been to provide, to identify those pieces of property and then start building up their site readiness. And the first step that we've done that is we've partnered with private property owners to do a Phase 1, to do a geotechnical report. The second thing that we've done as a team is identify who needs utilities. And then we went to the budget process last year and got money to spend for those water and sewer extensions. So we've been moving along the process, but slowly and not at the speed to market as a developer. And I think what Craig's talking about is maybe stepping on that gas a little bit, some opportunities that we find, and taking that role if there's a good opportunity for us.
The concept, how's everybody feel about that concept? We'll get policy stuff.
Right, right. Anything that we do, and this just gives us a framework which to spend funds for. And especially since we had the $4.5 million from Paramount that we're going to go out for bank bids as well. So that freed up some money and we just wanted to give you a recommendation for a framework.
All right, sounds good. All right.
Thank you.
Next item, item B, is economic development in the city of Grant Program Week. Dave, figure it out, dovetail right into that.
Yeah, the design of the presentations is coming to the floor. Anybody else on the faculty chair? Anyhow, good evening, and it's a pleasure to be here with you, Mayor and Council. I'm going to take the next sort of role in the ladder we're climbing with regards to our economic development funds and talk about incentives specifically, and then some of the other issues that we discussed in development, and how to apply some of that economic development fund. So briefly, incentives are inducements that are provided to the private sector to get an investment in exchange for consideration. So a company says, I'll invest $10 million and create 300 jobs. That's the consideration the city receives, and then in return, we provide an incentive to support their location. Incentives are approved in the general statutes under the Local Development Act. The Local Development Act was written in 1925. So incentives have been in our statutes for a long time, have been used for a long time in the state. However, it took until 1996 when I think 24 cases were brought to the North Carolina Supreme Court, known as the Moretti versus City of Winston-Salem. And that was the first time that the North Carolina Supreme Court, the courts generally affirmed the legality of incentives based on Moretti. So as we talked about development changing drastically in the last few years, and I think we could all, if we look outside as we're driving down the interstate and look at the headlines, we know this. Economic development is a turbocharged landscape. That's the best really word for it. There is, you know, turbocharging involves forcing air into an engine to get more horsepower, more speed. And whether it was the pandemic or pent-up demand before then, but we're in a turbocharged atmosphere. We have seen projects and prices for land that the state has never seen, and a development appetite for projects, whether directly attached to a project or speculative, that's been insatiable. So these are, it's driven by companies, it's been driven by their consultants and the projects that are happening. And there are some themes that are emerging regarding incentives that as part of this turbocharging. First of all, for the longest time in my career in economic development, the number one thing in economic development was location, location, location. You heard it very frequently when people talk about real estate. That is no longer the number one concern of companies looking to locate somewhere. It's labor, it's people, people, people. Do you have people, do you have a place that people want to live? And do you have training and education available for those people so that they can be successful in the community that they're living in? So labor is now number one. But right behind that gets the location again, but not just location, but speed to market, what Craig was talking about. How quickly can that site be shovel-ready? Can I be operational in the second quarter of 2024 if I build this mega project? Can you deliver on those development speeds and get that speed to market for the company? And then finally, as you can assume, when you start to bring in these different pressures, our ability to respond to these needs and to be very responsive quickly, and not only that, to have partnerships developed in order to respond to these needs, it's of paramount importance to these companies. They want to see that you're working with your workforce agencies, that your city council has, you know, an incentives policy that's working for them, that you have a partnership between the county government and the local government, that you're willing to work with private developers. All of these things are becoming more and more important in economic development, negotiations and recruitment. The North Carolina Economic Developers Association, as our sort of professional organization that I'm a member of, every year they do a survey of incentives to track trends. What are communities doing, what are they offering? And these are just some of the highlights from the 2022 study that actually Creative Economic Development, that's all they did. But as you can see, most of the municipalities and counties in the state do offer incentives. And a majority of them have an adopted incentive policy. And what are they spending these incentive monies on? Well, 81% offer cash grants as incentives to companies. 65% are offering water and sewer infrastructure. I would probably include roads and public right-of-way infrastructure in there as well. Interestingly, about 80% have no restrictions on the way that cash drain is used. So there's nothing specific in the language that says you must use your grant for this, or this, or this. And then this is another interesting point, we've seen this, Greensboro just did this with Syngenta in town, but, and they also did it with the Fresh Market, but retention incentives. Offering folks incentives to keep their company there rather than moving somewhere else. And in both of those cases in Greensboro, Syngenta and the Fresh Market were considering moving their locations to other places within the state and outside of the state. And they turned around to the city and said, hey, we're being courted by others, what are you going to do to keep us here? And that's, you know, sort of your existing industry support, if you argue, as offering retention incentives to a company looking to do an expansion project. So some of the other trends that are happening, as we've seen in North Carolina, it's been a very successful year. It's been a very successful three years statewide. So there's a lot more competition for state funds. So the billion reuse grants that we've gotten before, the level of competition of those has gone through the roof. They are really limiting the type of projects that they accept at the state level. Even the one North Carolina fund grant that we got with Steritech, that number we were expecting to be a lot more than $95,000. But that's because of the heightened competition. There's a lot of projects that are asking for assistance and for incentives. As was evidenced by the Toyota project, the Wolf Speed project that announced, and the Big Fast project, the legislature's a big player in these deals that put big projects coming. Our legislators are putting pen to paper and finding dollars within state funds to help build out local infrastructure and to develop larger incentive packages. And there have been some really big mega projects. And those three projects that announced in Chatham County, there's over $11 billion in announced investment and over 11,000 jobs to be created. So they put a lot of money into incentive packages. I think in Toyota, it was over $400 million total in incentives that went to that project. Of course, that's a two-plus-billion-dollar investment, but a significant play in partnership in putting those incentives together. I mentioned this in our other question, but we're being asked well in advance of a company promising jobs and investment to be partners with developers, to be active in the marketplace, whether that's doing a site study on private land or working to help with public infrastructure in a private development. But these developers and some of the companies are expecting participation from local governments very early on. They at least want to have conversations. They want to see the posture of the local government. Are you business-friendly, are you development-friendly, are you going to do a deal with us in the apartment? And of course, that all leads to increased pressure for local governments to participate. It's, I think it's similar to the, I wouldn't say it's really the prisoners' dilemma, but, or that everybody else is doing it, but this is the environment that we find ourselves. Communities are being more and more aggressive, the state's being more aggressive in courting companies. And that in turn puts pressure on local councils, local boards of commissioners to do more and to step up to the plate. We also talked about this, but all the good sites and buildings, they're gone, they've been purchased, they're under development. So the scraps that are left are being heavily competed after. And folks are starting to push further away from exit ramps and further away from interstate visibility to find good viable sites. What that turn, of course, puts pressure on local regulations, infrastructure. Do you have water and sewer five miles away from the interstate? You have it one mile away, are you expanding it, are you providing that opportunity to get more economic development? And then of course, as I mentioned, housing, labor, the quality of life, top of mind concerns for companies. We have a big company that's going to be visiting us on Thursday. They're going to drive around our city, they're going to take a look at new developments, they're going to take a look at old developments, they're going to look at the condition of the streets, they're going to look at, you know, is there trash on the sidewalk? These are all the different in-between things that these companies do on visits to see if you're investing in your community, if your quality of life is going to meet their standards. And how excited am I to show them several slides of a revamped Paramount Theater and a significant investment? How excited am I to show them streetscape investments in downtown? Or significant parks and recreation investments at our ballpark or at our different swimming pools? I mean, all the actions that city council's been taking to invest in our community, I'm going to turn around and show all these companies and say, look at the community that we built for our residents, existing and new. This is what you want to be part of. So it's a big part of our discussion. And while it's not an official incentive, that's the glue that sort of keeps these deals together. What are you doing in your community, how vibrant is it? How much do I want my employees, executives, et cetera, to live here? So setting all of that context and recognizing that things are changing rapidly, our incentive policy has not changed rapidly. It was created in 2004 and last updated 10 years ago, to my last record. And it's a very traditional policy. If you look back into the early 2000s, there were several cities that passed incentive policy at the same time. It's like reading the same incentive policy across and across, so it's very traditional, doesn't have a lot of flexibility, and it's very modern. It was, it was developed, and some, several other incentive policies throughout the state were developed in a different county, it was a different world back then. You know, in 2012, I think we were still dealing with the Great Recession to a certain extent. So it was definitely a different world, there wasn't as much money flowing privately and publicly, so less participation. What this, what does traditional policy means with some of its, you know, more exacting or strict limits is that it also limits the opportunity to who's eligible. So who do we want to support in Burlington through our incentive policy? Well, under our current policy, with its policy, with its investment limits, we're missing a lot of opportunities to support small and medium-sized businesses. A lot of existing companies that are here that want to expand, there's just not much available to them, either at the state or the local level. Making some adjustments to our incentive policy would provide more avenues to get support to our local businesses. And then of course, we've been through several strategic efforts in the city, and this was highlighted and identified through that group and through an outside group that we consulted with that was comprised of state officials, real estate developers, other economic developers. They suggested that we look at this incentive policy and make some changes. So what are some options for council to consider? Well, you'll see the themes running through this, but I think first and foremost is removing some of those hard eligibility requirements and putting the power back to city council to look at and review different projects and whether they feel they're appropriate for the city of Burlington. So instead of saying that an existing company has to invest $2 million in order to be eligible, why don't we have them present their project and see if it's a good fit for the city and for city council? Rather than this, you know, not including somebody with what's something of an arbitrary limit, let's see what the project is and if it's something that we want to do. We'd also like to include some tools that are not expressly stated in the current incentive policy that a lot of other communities have been using, and frankly, we've been using in the city of Burlington. So including more infrastructure discussion in our incentive policy to talk about roads, water, and sewer. Recently with Steretech, again, are building a road to help them, to help them develop. Fee waivers. Former interim city manager David Chee used this very frequently in method and brought that same practice to our discussion. The fees that we obtain, that's, that isn't necessarily revenue in our pocket necessarily. That's, that's something that's coming that we're not, we're not really budgeting against. So by providing that to a company that's coming in here, where they're going to realize a savings, and we're not necessarily going to be worse for wear from not having those fees in our coffers. And then I mentioned this one, I think this is something that I've seen a lot of communities doing more and more, is supplementing workforce training efforts. Our community accomplished system in most economic development incentive agreements puts a grant number in there. For Steretech, I think it was around $90,000 to help train their employees. What if we added something in there and supported more workforce training and made it more specific to city of Burlington residents? So that we can ensure more of our local folks are working at these different plants and companies, and we're not just relying on folks commuting in or relocating to the city. And then these last two get to some of the items that Mayor Butler referenced. Looking at some geographic-specific tools that target opportunity zones or corridors within opportunity zones. Looking at targeted non-industrial developments or commercial development. Maybe mixed-use development that happens in a downtown context. Maybe it has a housing element above it, but there's a retail and also a commercial development below that has job creation and investment potential. That's some language that I think we'd like to see in this new incentive policy. And then another item that we talked about was providing matching funding mechanisms for whether it's a developer relationship or a private company, or even something relating to workforce, having funding available to be able to match, that's in the bank that's there that you can show to a company that's looking to make an investment, say, hey, we're your partner, this is how we're going to do. This is a similar tactic that we used with Medical Office Project, that usually, that came through recently. They were expanding several bits of public infrastructure, and so we were a partner in that to help get that development going and add more taxable value and job creation to the city. Some other language, and this gets to Craig's point at number five, putting in language that would allow or support or open the door for more city-oriented or city-led economic development for sites and buildings. And that can also be redevelopment. So if a building needs to be torn down to make something happen, or needs to enhancement, you know, this, this isn't just raw land, this is also our existing built infrastructure and ways that we can reuse that and adapt it. And the, the last two points are more for legality's concern, but we, we need to underline that all incentives are discretionary, that there is no right to an economic development incentive of a company, and that the power to bestow those incentives and make decisions on them rests in the city council through a properly-named public hearing. And then we, we do in this policy, this is a, Moretti states this, we have to set some sort of maximum project limit, and that's typically going to be based on the jobs and investment and the return that the city gets through a calculation. Any questions so far, the council? Any questions? So I'm going to get into some of the specifics of those suggested considerations. The first one is a grants program, looking at high-traffic corridors that are in the city that have really good redevelopment opportunity and a lot of existing small business investment. These corridor grants, the city of Charlotte has a really good one, the city of Fayetteville has one to use as well. But you provide dollar-to-dollar matching grants at a certain cap limit to new folks that are making investments and creating jobs in these identified corridors. The budget would be used from the Economic Development Fund. I'll have a very simple breakdown in a couple of slides. And then of course, for the purposes of these programs, really what we're doing is we're assisting in the creation of new jobs and new private investment that leads to a public benefit. So these corridor programs, the real intent is to create a strong public benefit by providing grant fundings in this specific geographic area to enhance those. And what would those areas be? So we have the North Church Corridor from basically downtown to the city limits there in Hall River. We have the East Webb Avenue Corridor from the downtown district to the city limits with Grant. And then we have our Maple Avenue Corridor from the downtown district to Harden Street right here. And that's where there are business opportunities, development opportunities, there's a lot of high traffic in each of these corridors. And frankly, there's opportunities rather for, for them to be better corridors, to be better managed, to be better from an appearance standpoint, and to see more investment. The people are there, the, the retail opportunities are there. Really, if you drive these corridors, there's not a ton of vacancies. There are people there, there's business there, there's big business to be had. What this does is this sort of, and to use that turbocharging metaphor again, adding a corridor grant heightens the level of development that you can see, and maybe encourages somebody to do a development in one of these corridors when they were looking somewhere else.
And let me say, these are ideas about areas that staff has talked about where corridors can be. There can be other areas in the city as well, but this is just our first step.
That's correct, thank you. Another way to do this, again, gets to something we've, we've talked about, but having an industrial and commercial development program. That again is, is creating partnerships with the private sector to see the type of development that we want to see. So this again defines the city's interest in seeing more for sale and for lease industrial and commercial property. Creates a program for reimbursement of the construction of public infrastructure on these sites or buildings. And again, it would utilize the economic development funds that's established by city council. And our public benefit would come from the creation of new jobs and new taxable investment in real and commercial property. So again, this is something that we've talked about doing, it's something that we've done in the Medical Office Project. It's something that we've talked about speculative development before, to get new speculative buildings up and available for market. So this would be another offshoot of a specific program using the economic development fund. And there's a lot more, obviously, that can come into these, but from, from just looking at rough numbers, you could allocate $3 million for your industrial and commercial development program, and then a million each for your matching grants and your corridor grants program. And that creates, you know, a pot of money that is somewhat limited, so there is a limit to what would be available. And then when these funds would be exhausted, we'd be having this conversation again, how did the program work? Did we see the results we wanted to? What should we change? What should we adjust? And of course, those evaluations can happen in real time as we're still going through these processes. There's nothing magical about these numbers, but I, I did see that industrial and commercial likely would have a heavier lift with purchasing options, doing any sort of infrastructure enhancements. So that has a slightly number, a larger number because of some of those aspects. So what are some of the benefits of doing some updates and looking at some changes here? Well, first of all, having more flexibility and re-centering the decision-making with our city council based on some of these parameters. Addressing some of the redevelopment issues and corridors that have been identified by council or our staff. I think giving some policy backing to any city-funded or directed initiatives that we may have. So if there is a strong push for the city to have a site or a building that we control, changes to this policy with some language would sort of pave the way for us to do that in a clearer way. And then really what this is about is it's about having that comprehensive toolbox to really start leveraging what statute allows and what council has shown a willingness to do. Making some tweaks to our policy, I think would open it up a little bit more than it would be, I don't want to say a welcome mat necessarily, but it's, I think it's a window into the opportunity that a private sector developer or company would see in working with the city of Burlington. So I like this policy, I see that this, this community is ready to partner with me to make investments. They see the value and the return on what I'm doing. I, I like the way that this looks. And certainly I'll take any questions or engage in some discussion with the council. Thank you.
So a fair amount of what you presented, you're doing already, you're just saying let's put it in the form of a policy.
Our policy does not reflect some of the things that we've been currently doing, but that's correct.
They're allowing it under statute, but our policy does not clearly define it. How would you say?
I think that's one, another person could do.
Correct.
Pay for the person.
Yes.
And one of the things Peter and I have had really good conversations about is our existing industry as well, and how we really, we have a position that is open in his department now. And part of that job description is really going back and focusing on our existing industry because not, it's not all the time you get the new industry coming in and, you know, the Steretech's coming in. It is those smaller industries that are here already that may need that little help of how to walk through the process of a rezon, or how to walk through the process of working with the community college or the state. So we're really going to do a, a really hard focus on them as well. And also, as Peter said, commercial. There's a lot of large commercial developers that are out there, and now that they're paying $15 and $20 an hour, those are good salaries as well. So we're really trying to look at it as an overall economic plan for the city and really trying to get all aspects.
I, I think this also, this has happened in the past, where you've got local businesses, people who want to go in and create a business and, the business people, but they haven't been involved in incentive before, or what, how about it? And unfortunately, I think maybe those questions may have come sometimes through the manager's office or for a council person, where in reality, those questions probably be dictated by to the economic development staff. Because what occurs, at times people tend to take things for granted, and then there's issues as the process goes on. And these aren't large businesses, but they're important businesses. And I think Bob and I have seen that happen recently. Just lack of understanding, misunderstanding, they're likely, you know, they're wrong, it's just misunderstanding. But to do that, that goes back to Peter's point, is, you know, we need to determine the low that we want his operation to take and the amount of leeway or whatever he can, he can go out and deal with this. You know, economic development is crucial and it involves a number of people. But over the years, when we've been very successful, you've got to have point people. You don't need to have people talking to you, numbers of people. You know, point person in the organization to handle. So there's a lot of mixed signals going out for these individuals. So I'm not telling you how to do it, but I think that's the process we have to get to to be successful if we're really going to grow.
And I, I cannot speak highly enough to the staff of the way they work together with all our economic development, from engineering, engineering questions, if it's a water source question, if it's a planning and zoning question, how they really come together at a moment's notice to have discussions about what's best and how we can make this project happen. So you've got an incredible staff here that really is focused on making sure we do the right things as well.
So I, I do believe that we need to be nimble and flexible with our economic development incentive policy. Because times are changing, the needs of specific industries are very unique. Some require infrastructure, water, sewer, others need training. I think it's just vastly different based on the type and style of project. So the more flexible we can be and the more nimble we can be, is still going to come from council, and we then are going to find ourselves picking and choosing. So that to me sets us up for a little bit of murky waters down the road, is well, if you didn't give it to this one, let's give it to that one. How do we manage that from a legal standpoint, David? Would it be a budget? Would that mean we got money out ahead? Well, that money's gone, that money's gone, until the next budget cycle? Or how do you, what do you use to be your determinant?
You know, the last 10 months, eight, 10 months, it may kind of eventually see this total transformation in front of us. And I can think back on how we were pretty rigid back in the day, and maybe this sort of baseline requirements and all. Flexibility and being nimble, determining you. It seems to me, how many towns have been in Rockland, somebody that need a tree-like business, talking about, they need a tree-like business. What my mind was, what my mind over the last 10 months, being the day to week, economic development is part of your business. And that means you have to build in that flexibility. And so much of it is dictated by meeting the competition. You want to know what needs to be in your toolbox, of what other folks are trying to pull, are trying to put forward. So it, it just strikes me, the comfort level with the city council in building this flexibility into a policy, while at the same time making sure that you're free to do it as much as possible at the same label, you know, is, is kind of a grasping challenge. So to answer specific questions about the dollars and cents, I think that's a decision, how about $5 million here? Are you willing to really have unbalanced or circle things and all? I think that will, the darkness, it should kind of go along, just matter how comfortable one of you as a council with this good capability.
I mean, I can see certainly when you're talking about small business, we'll have to start, they're asking for money, and we find ourselves saying, well, there's money eligible if you're, if you're going to go to this part of town or this area, you're going to be on this quarter.
Correct.
So, you know, do we have, do we have legal protections and our ability to navigate through that? If we do, I think it needs to be as flexible as we are, hey?
I, I think we could also put in the policy and that, that just because we have an economic incentive, doesn't mean you're getting one. You know, and I, I think we do have that flexibility because we still have to vet each and every project that comes to you and making sure that it's viable and that they can have a good business plan and that it's a good investment for the city and our taxpayers. So I, I think we do have that flexibility to say, hey, you need more information or that may not be the right investment that the city needs to make as far as you're buying.
So, but you're talking about families.
Well, yeah, fair's a funny word, quality, or at least with finance first.
Right.
And meeting some of the goals that you've all, over the years. Here's my point for that, is for 15 years, as long as I've been elected, I've heard, why don't you make, why don't you make business go to these hurdles? But now you're saying you can. Well, now you're saying you can. I mean, in essence, if you want an incentive, that's worth it.
Well, yeah, you can incentivize.
Yep.
If you're willing to do that, okay? And, you know, ultimately, each area decision is made by, for this quarter. And what impressed me of over the last eight years, eight months, leadership, return on investment, ROI investment, ROI investment, those are business decisions. And you're in an industry.
Well, the industry is almost essential now to be a great tax base.
Drive choice.
And quite frankly, provide services to people who want, I mean, someone made a couple a long ago about some decisions to be made recently. It's been pretty amazing to, you know, I don't know if a lot of people call me, but a lot of people call about some of the things that we did in terms of what they think outside of they are about it. And these aren't, you know, they weren't a lot of big projects, but it impacts people in different ways. That's what gets some type of incentive or at least some type of energy in the community. And I think we have to be a little bit ahead of learning to do that. My only, my main question would be is, I think all of this sounds great, but it's how split together would be determined within the organization so it can function. There needs to be a process, a process, but and I think we look close to that. Everybody knows what their roles are and people then, as Craig said earlier, that they'll react and be in a quick manner and so you can move forward. A lot of these projects is all time driven. Not just when it's going to get done, but when the idea comes to the table, what kind of response you can have. I think that's a key ingredient to be able to get something out in a quick period of time. And there needs to be some form of executive committee, I would think, I'm not going to say out of town here, that needs to be around the table when all this comes to the forefront, that can be that it is and can be on a daily basis and needs to be to consider these things.
And we've started that. And I've replicated Jane setting up that process. And we're meeting right now on a weekly basis with staff and basically looking at what's coming through zoning, what's looking at rezoning, what have we heard, you know, and making sure that we are all on the same page with respect to staff.
I think that's why it's important to get that to the city management position field too. We're in a position now, we need to have the horses at the table to do work. Well, we've seen economic incentive requests from companies that have looked and talked and sort of, just sort of kicked the tires, so to speak. And then all of a sudden, a blink of an eye, they'll say, all right, we're ready to move, but we need to know, can you do this by Friday at noon? And all of a sudden, this might, what changed to spur all of that and the ability to be nimble and flexible and to at least know that you've got the authority to do it whether or not council decides to do it, I think is what's important. Because then that gives up, that gives Peter or staff the ability to say, that's doable, still got to be approved. But yes, that's doable, where now it's kind of like, well, we'll just have to talk to everybody and see once we have a very adequate policy, almost not one.
Well, this, that flexibility would get us closer to that decision without, and then we come to council and provide council with the background, with the analysis and have a discussion in a closed session and see where are we at with how far we've gotten with this, with this deal.
The level of that is with, with nimbleness and flexibility comes a certain amount of understanding that, you know, there's got to be an ROI to David's, there's got to be an ROI to it so that there's not going to be a, there's not going to be an economic development project that we had the authority or we had the ability to do X, but X is way too much based on the ROI of the project. So how do we manage that? That's an internal discussion because the last thing I want to be pulled into is a request for incentive that makes no sense. It's a waste.
And that's where it goes back, the staff has to do a really good job of vetting these out and looking at the ROI, looking at the formula and go back to what the formula David had. It's just an incredible sheet. So these allow us to still use that and Peter, I think, has made some changes to it as well. So we do have some analytical data that we will look at as well.
I think we're paying for it. Yeah, he's recruiting pretty hard in a, you know. I mean, as far as I'm concerned, I'd like to see us move forward with this concept to, and then, but with David's hand upon, what do we have the authority to do and then how can we? I think it's going to be a three-step process where we start defining some of this a little bit, understand the legalities of it a little bit more and then say, all right, are we comfortable with all this or would we want to carve this from that out? And another part comes back, I think, generally, responsible in the staff, the manager's office. Do we have people in place that can make this happen internally? And as time goes on, it'll get better and better. Obviously, you're going to have multiple departments and people have work to do, but, you know, can we respond quick enough where we have a process that we don't have to reinvent each time something comes up? That's where I think slows them down. And that's got to be ready to be a part of.
And a lot of it's got to do with contraction.
That's right. It's going to involve infrastructures, involve technologies, involve, you know, obviously our work size, involve finance, legal, I mean, you know, it's, I don't know what, I read what I'm somewhat, I mean, inadequate, I'm still a little bit confused here, is the player, is the chamber the economic development, what's by government? Is there a central economic development process in this county led by any particular organization that? That's a great question.
I don't, I want to say yes, and that's the chamber's function, but the chamber and I both see the same projects that are coming through and looking at, so if a company's interested in Burlington, what the chamber and I have discussed is that I'm going to be the lead economic developer on a project that's important.
But unchambered, chamber is functioning as economic, or the chamber.
Right.
Okay, so you said the chamber, it's not like a county.
That's right.
Well, okay.
But Peter is basically in charge of what happens inside the municipal office.
Well, there's nothing wrong with the fact, there's nothing wrong with what Melvin wants to do, what Burlington wants to do, what Grant wants to do, is different. There's nothing wrong with that. So the chamber cannot be one size fits all, but they can't be that dynamic either. And so, well, we're going to do that for Burlington, that for Melvin. So I think that's why we brought Peter aboard when we brought, when we hired Peter.
And looking at historically, I thought it was a brilliant move that the city did do because you want to, you're worried about Burlington. You've got to focus your efforts on Burlington, not on Hall River and everybody else. That our focus is, is city Burlington.
But when there is a project that requires a team effort, I think the chamber is the leader, son of the pool, all that to get.
Right.
Yeah, and I wanted to supplement my comments. I've had a great experience working, especially with the newer staff at the chamber. We've been, you know, hand in glove throughout the Stertech process, throughout the, you know, four or five other projects that we're working on right now. They manage our communications through the county. We've met directly with Heidi and with Brian at the county as well. So that, so far, so good. It's been great working with this new team. When the leads come through, we'll actually have a discussion, like, well, do you have anything good for this one or is Burlington going to submit anything? And if Burlington does, hey, we'll follow your lead here and it's been great. And when they need support, we're actually working on a project that's in Gilford County. And even there, the public at the chamber said, hey, we know it's not in the chamber, but if you need any extra support, let us know. So it's been great.
And again, nothing negative against the chamber, but our focus is the city.
Yeah, I don't think none of the chamber.
Yes.
And, you know, I think the only, to Harold's point, I think the only feedback that I hear is when it comes to Burlington, popular projects that are going to eventually get, we're going to need the county involved as a partner and get them involved as soon as we can.
Yes, we do.
Not the last minute. So I think we're all figuring out how to better communicate and sync up during this new era of recruiting businesses and it's, our last project was living proof of that.
Yeah, there's enough projects and enough work to go around.
So how many, how many funding sources were involved in that?
Oh, gosh. Five, yeah, yeah.
And that would have been just a basic one, if you were a county.
Yeah, right. Well, we're, we're working with them on another project that's potential to be in our city limits and they've been fantastic. They've got a big team that they've been able to flex and help us out. They've been great. And really, the chamber has, well, and it hasn't just been the chamber working the county, the chamber has its own funding source through their economic development foundation that they've leveraged in the Stertech case and they may leverage in some other projects that we're working on. So that's been fantastic.
So is your ask here, do we want to proceed in this direction? And if so, you guys?
Yes.
Are putting it together?
No, no exacts, again, no policy that is ready to be signed. I know there's a lot of steps to get to that point, but this is sort of the philosophy or the shape of the direction that we want to go in.
And heavy living, but as we're trying to work through this to see what's going to look like?
Yes.
I'd like to just add one thing, I, you know, for those involved in the first block, it was written in the second and all, and it clearly would need some flexibility and I agree with that. But I think, I think I'd like to go back, you know, what's driving us in this stuff? The owners, the jobs and increase the tax value. I don't want us to lose sight of that. I think, you know, there may be people that make applications and, you know, they just want to renovate their buildings, there's no increase in jobs, okay, no increase in tax value. I think we, you know, talking about the ROI, I think we need to look at that. I don't want us to lose sight. I mean, there's a lot of worthy projects out there, but it doesn't, and I might want to say new jobs, but even job retention.
Yes.
We don't want to overlook that.
That's right.
So what I'm saying is, I'm just a fundamental issue here, is what are we doing it for? And these are two basic reasons. So I'm just asking you to, you know, when you roll the policies out, I'm in favor of flexibility, but I also want to hear a little something about new jobs, more tax.
Yes, sir.
Better, you know, more tax growth and that sort of thing.
Can you imagine who was in this business in early 2000s? I mean, you really close your child in terms of child retention, what happened with the tax office? I mean, you can't underestimate the number of job people who lost jobs as a result of things going away. Now, hopefully most of them somehow recovered and their flexibility could be trained, but there's people who did that issue for decades.
Now, the city council did a lot of great work with Glen Raven Mills, with Meredith Web Printing. They did a lot of work with, oh, why am I not thinking of Kaiser Roth? So there were several instances where the city stepped up to do some protection and support of those companies.
Is everybody good with that? Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Peter. Next item, item D is annexation request. We've got some voluntary non-contiguous and one voluntary contiguous, so maybe.
Good evening, Mayor and members of the council. Let's see if I can get. And that's some other things up. Okay, here we go. So I know you have a number of items combined in this one lump sum for the voluntary annexations and utility requests. I'll focus on the first twelve first. So these were, we received voluntary annexations and utility requests for twelve non-contiguous parcels. The first of ten are shown here on the map that are all along North Grand Hook Hotel Road. the second set was on Whites' Canal Road, so that was on one page, on one fifty-one. This is fifteen twenty-nine Whites' Canal Road. And then the last one in this series was on Maple Avenue. The address is three six three five Maple Avenue. All of the requests for these utility connections were for water only. Some of the properties were vacant, some of them had residential dwellings. Staff reviewed all of the requests and we followed the utility connection request procedures. They've all been also vetted by the city manager for our city code section forty point four. For each of these parcels, staff is recommending a utility request, but we are recommending that you defer the annexation at this time. We're asking for these items to be put on the consent agenda for tomorrow night and asking for you to defer any public hearing in consideration of the applications for annexation. So those are, those are fairly simple requests and standard procedures for, for folks who want to have a utility request outside of the city limits.
The property, yeah, the property's on Grand Hook Hill Road. Is that beyond that little bridge on the left?
I'm not entirely sure. I believe there, the front or top of the road on the left-hand side.
So it looks just like about here, extends to that church. Is that right, Tom?
Yeah, there before you get to where the bridge is going across the Hall River, going back to like Carolina.
Right.
Yeah, maybe this gives you a better context too.
That small, that small bridge when you kind of go down that way, before you get like the diesel engine in that area, right there on the left, right there.
Okay, got you. Thanks.
Yeah, so if you're coming from Carolina Mill up here, you would turn left and go down the hill, basically.
And it's literally down the hill too.
Okay, so those, for those who are asking to be put on the consent agenda.
Is everybody good with that?
Great, thank you. And then the other utility request is part of, also part of the annexation petition and it's for the property that's highlighted here, that I'm kind of circling on, six twenty-six West Old Glen Hill Road. The applicant is also seeking a water connection for this property as well, but this is contiguous to existing city limits. So you've got the development, the extension of Russell Meadows here, but this hatch, I guess it's more of a dotted lawn, is all the existing city limits. So we're making a recommendation for city council to consider annexing this property because it is contiguous. Again, we followed the same kind of utility connection process and protocol. So we are recommending the utility connection as well as the annexation. We ask that we put a resolution on for tomorrow night for the consent agenda, which would then set a public hearing date for November first for the public camera. And this is not, there's no future development known and or associated as part of this application. The annexation agreement is specific that the utility connection would be for single-family residences only.
And this is not, we just changed the zoning to high density, right?
There's been no change to the zoning of this property. It's, it is within the MBR zoning district and it will stay, there's no request to change that. This is, this is a single-family residential property and because it's contiguous to existing city limits, that's why we're making the recommendation to extend the city limits there. This property has been recently rezoned here.
It's adjacent to that.
It's adjacent to that. But it's not part of their development.
It's on section two, that's on Old Glen.
It's on section two, it's on Old Glen Road.
Yeah. Any questions on this one?
And that's it for those, right?
That's it for those, yes. Thank you.
Yep, thank you. Item F is the great GREAT grant award announcement. North State's built out Internet connectivity in Burlington, so just to have a good message gotten. This evening, I am presenting a quick update to you concerning the latest Boring Bull economies with access to technology for great grant, uh, award announcement, also the Affordable Connectivity Program called ACP, and the overall build-out, build-out of internet services within Burlington and surrounding communities. Uh, the Great Grant Program focuses on facilitating economic development through the deployment of broadband service to unserved or underserved areas of the state. Uh, unfortunately, with this latest round, Burlington, within Burlington City Limits, none of our areas are selected for this round of, uh, great grant awards. However, Burlington residents are still eligible to take advantage of the Affordable Connectivity The couple items of consideration for a great grant were that the, uh, participants must have been eligible to, uh, the grant providers to provide, uh, high-quality, uh, high-speed broadband services, and they must participate within this program here, the Federal Communication Commission's Affordable Connectivity Program, which helps to ensure that households can afford broadband they need to work, school, healthcare, and more. So for eligible households, this program provides a $30 per month discount for internet services, and also a one-time discount up to $100 for the purchase of a laptop, desktop computer, or tablet device. I didn't provide the, uh, the website here, but it's a, uh, www.fcc.gov slash ACP. And that lays out the, uh, guidelines requirements for eligibility for residents who could actually take advantage of this program. This slide right here, uh, shows what Governor Cooper has passed the North Carolina Department of Information Technology, also the NCDIT, with administration of the Great Grant Program within the state, and more specifically with closing the digital divide and building digital equality of all communities and individuals in North Carolina, with the stated goals of increasing each of these metrics by 2025. So today we've got, these are the current goals or the current levels that they have to reach these metrics. This is the goal within 2025, just a few short years. Uh, the awardee of great grants for our area was, uh, North State. They name, that name may sound familiar. They went into, were entering into an agreement called POPSI. The dark purple areas show the areas where the great grant, uh, was awarded for them in that way they would be providing coverage. The light purple areas here are the areas that will be self-funded by North State, the most. Here's an actual blowout of the actual self-funded project areas that North State would be covering within the Burlington area. And then this last slide here shows the pathway from where they're going to be coming in Greensville to the POPSI, or the Point Presence there off of South of Long Island Avenue. That's all I had for short sweet. If you have any questions? Any questions?
Could you repeat the website?
Yes, it's, uh, HTTPS colon forward slash, forward slash, www.fcc.gov forward slash ACP. Why don't you, why don't you forward that, some of those five minutes, right? Get that to everybody. So no action, I'm just taking the next one. Just information. Everybody, any questions?
Coming up on two arguments. Do you want to take a quick break? I'm looking forward to it. I'm ready to roll.
All right, well. Just asking in case, in case anybody's feeling weird. We're cutting the corner, while we're here at home.
You got enough crowd, I'll see you soon.
Those are, we're short to the point.
Police Department, retention, and recruitment. And we'll run that to the front line. Any questions?
I like that, great job.
Mayor and Council, appreciate the opportunity to be here, uh, tonight. Want to keep this story as minimal as possible? So, uh, we don't find ourselves in uncharted territory, uh, but I've been sitting and listening throughout the evening, and I think we find ourselves, uh, with police, uh, retention and recruitment, uh, in a space that we've talked about tonight, transformation. It's transforming very quickly, and it's evolving right, uh, very quickly, and, uh, we continue to try to find opportunities and ways to, to meet those needs, uh, recognizing that we were here not long ago, I believe last time, uh, last year, about the same time, uh, speaking to the same issue. I appreciate the opportunity to come back tonight and speak to, I want to get really kind of right to the point and at least identify, uh, what the goal, what the conversation is. And, um, you'll see that, uh, on both corners of the slide, uh, we talked about 24 and 12. So currently, on average, over, um, several years, our departure rate has been about 24 officers a year, where we've been able to hire about 12 officers, um, each of those years. Uh, so our goal is to flip that trend, literally flip it and try to achieve, uh, no more than 12, uh, departures a year, and increase our, uh, onboarding and, uh, twin-onboarding of new employees, lateral employees, and retaining the ones that we've got. Uh, we've done some math around this and just successful, which we will be, I feel confident we will be, just going to take some work to get us there. Uh, at our current rate, it would still take about four and a half years for us to get back to a full, fully, uh, fully staffed, uh, police department. Uh, this slide is really intended just to represent a period of time from 2018 to 2023, uh, projection into the, uh, early spring of 23, um, and this is really the trajectory that we've been on. You're going to hear me through this presentation talk about the number of officers. I want to clear that up as we get started. When I talk about the number of officers, our staff on the front lines that answer calls for service, generate police reports, respond to a business or a person in crisis, um, that's the number that I'm going to be speaking about, right? And our department's comprised of a lot of professional staff members in our top communications department, uh, across the entire organization. We've already had a great leadership team in place, but the number that concerns me is the number of officers that I can put in a police car, regardless of their current assignment, but in the future, how many officers am I going to be able to put in a police car in the coming months to answer those critical calls for service? So when you hear me speak about percentages, uh, just have the perspective that I'm talking about frontline staff and the need to bolster, uh, and sustain that frontline staff.
Achieve our capacity is 146, is that right?
145 is currently our, our off-road staff, but I'll take that 146 if it was on the table first.
That's fine.
Right.
You said it's going to take four and a half years anyway.
Not occurring, not, not directed by, right. So once again, I want to just spend a little bit of time talking about two, two things that really primarily drive the responsible police department. Those are calls for service, uh, right? And, and police departments in some ways can create or drive that with proactive, uh, police, uh, work, which I think, uh, as a police agency, we've done well with in the past, and I think as a community, they have an expectation for us to generate some of that proactive work, right? Working within the community, identifying, um, crime, crime, and then identifying strategies and going out and addressing crime issues. For us, for us to achieve that goal over a period of time, as you can see, back in 2018, we had about 80% of that frontline staff that's needed to answer those calls for service. And down here, you'll see on each year as we progress that I've identified the number of calls for service annually that we get, how many incidents for, uh, take, reports that we take each year, and how many traffic crashes that we respond. I think that just gives you a sense of the call volume over all per year, and I'll just tell you on the front that this, these numbers, even though they fluctuate a little bit annually, are pretty consistent. We, we've not had a reduction, uh, consistent with our reduction in staffing. So the same as call volume exists, that we're just having to get creative and try to come up with creative solutions to either answer those calls in a different way or process those in a different way with reduced staffing. Pre, uh, pre-COVID pandemic, uh, we were actually looking pretty good there for a while, about 90% of what we needed on that frontline staff. As you can see, in 2020, we moved down to 82%. In 2021, we were able to maintain about 73%, and here today or currently, we've got about 70% of that frontline.
If, if that number, 145 you were referring to when you say 73% of?
No, no, it's, it's not. That's why I want to clarify that and verify again. Well, I, you know, that number is derived from the, um, officers that are employees that are designed to handle frontlin, uh, frontline calls, right? Um, it's been a while since I've done that, and I don't think we should count me towards that, not that I'm not willing to go out and do it, uh, but I'm not necessarily to do it, not, and I've got other staff that are, it's your supervisors or other.
Sort of repeat that number again, then.
Uh, which number?
73% of?
So it's, it's 73% reduction, it's a, well, that 73% is what we have available of frontline staff. Now, if you want that number, I can pull up my sheet, I have to, you know, work us down on scale and get to that number, but the thing that, what I'm trying to represent is that we are trending with, um, each quarter that passes or every six months that passes, we're not winning the war with frontline staff, and we have to onboard them and keep So the department, uh, required a minimum, and this is not what should be allocated. What should be allocated to patrol division to do what, what people would say is some of that frontline response and, you know, mark police unit, uniform presence, uh, that number is 72. But for us to do it safely, we, we need 56 at the minimum to be able to answer the volume, the calls for service, the types of calls that they are. Many of our calls require more than one officer response, officer safety, um, and, and also to be able to provide, uh, enhanced community safety. So that's the need. I mean, that's bare minimum of where we feel, uh, like we have to be, uh, which also matches, you know, a national model that we compare that to per capita, per size of our community. This number, uh, in the green column represents the number of detectives that should be in our criminal investigations division over the last, you know, say, four years that we've averaged. ANAP represents the Almanx County Narcotics and Enforcement Team Training Division. We have two officers in that, and we have six, uh, dedicated SROs as each of you were. We have additional SROs that were currently, uh, working in ABS, uh, through, uh, using off-duty or retired officers who brought those back. Uh, so we've got more than that, but these are the six that are dedicated, uh, or should be there. Today, we currently have 10, 10 officers in seven, so we've seen a drastic reduction in the last 18 months in our capacity to maintain employees in that division, not because they've left, but because we had to bring in and back into our patrol division to achieve the 56 that we need. Similarly, with ANAP, we've had, uh, a reduction there, so we're down to, uh, three in that unit, and two, we currently are maintaining two in our training division. That has been a point of contention within the agency, right? We've got two officers that are in there that are implementing and developing training. Y'all have heard, uh, my predecessor before me and probably the one before him and the one before that, talk about the need for this profession to have a high-level trainer. So we have been able, uh, to this point to maintain, uh, that, the two officers in the training division, um, but that very soon will likely have to change as well. And then you can see where we're supposed to, we've got six currently today, we still have those six. If you'll move over to this column in pink, certainly without, uh, hopefully getting into too much detail, we're trying to be very focused on predicting the future, not based off of speculative information or what we just based off past stats, but taking past stats and comparing that with current information that we have about our staff, where, uh, some of those may be looking to be employed in other places. And we're trying to be very predictive because we know that the next 16 months is critical for this department. We expect, uh, by November of 2022, for our detective division to have been cut in half and have nine, uh, individuals, uh, remaining in there to investigate all the crimes that are generated in Burlington. We expect the number of ANAP officers to be able to be deployed, uh, will be two. Uh, we believe that our training division will be reduced to that one training officer, uh, and then, uh, five SROs. This unfortunately changed, even though I think the last time I updated, uh, I'm going to sorry page for making a difference, we'll be honest today, um, but this is now, this new number is now 12 as of around 3:30 this afternoon, uh, what we believe will be separations from the police department for the next three months. This does include two expected retirements, uh, one of those being Assistant Chief Chris Gaddis, and the one, a long-term undervered department, uh, who has earned his right to You've heard me say this, and I may duplicate it later, and I do apologize, these police vacancies, once we, once they occur, if they occur, on average, usually take about a year for the day that the person leaves, but the day that I couldn't have an officer out there in the field responding by themselves will be cause slow load. Uh, answering calls for service takes about a year. When you take the DLAT program, which is right at, uh, four and a half, five months, and at the field training program on the back of that, which is another four or five months, and then we do, uh, pre and post academy and make sure that staff come to Burlington, um, really, you know, get acclimated to Burlington and learn a lot about policing on front end, we're looking at about a year. So this PowerPoint at the bottom really is just a snapshot of a two-week window for us, uh, these will be from September the 19th through the 3rd. We did have a resignation that went to the private sector. We've had two other resignations that went to other municipal agencies, and we've had, um, five, five visits from other state agencies that are doing what they call final background stages on applicants that have applied with them from Burlington. As you can imagine, as each of you are aware, where those people don't typically show up until people are in the final stages, uh, because, you know, the employers are aware that, that's often a concern for staff.
Do you, do you do X and R interviews?
We did, and HR does as well. Yeah, we'd be glad to get requested, share with you some insight into, to that. So these are realities, right? And I, and I'll be honest with you, coming before our council and, and exposing, uh, you know, the department as a whole sometimes often concerns me, but I also think it's extremely important that we're transparent with some of the realities. We've done a lot of different tactical moves in the last 12 to 18 months to restructure the department. I've even asked to freeze some supervisor positions, which I, you know, really resist doing because you don't want to stymie the growth of staff, you don't want to have a negative impact in your succession plan. But to, to have to replace another body at the bottom every time that I promote, so we've done some of those strategic moves. Before I get into this slide, I want to say that anything that's perceived as a not doing as much, and it's not, has not been a cognitive decision on behalf of the department, in other words, no leaders have sat around and said, "Well, let's just stop doing this," or "Let's stop doing that." Those conversations don't occur. But the reality is, is when you have less officers, things like DWI enforcement, you have less opportunity to interdict a DWI, um, person that's driving it very. So I, I want to make sure that we recognize nobody's made cognitive decisions to stop doing police work. That's not what we're about, right? In fact, I'd say that the staff that continue, they're drawn to the police department, um, they're committed, they're, they're working more hours than they ever worked. We're having them come in on days off, extending their five-day week, which are 10.2, to average hour days, in some cases, the six-day weeks, that's 60, 65 hours in six days a week, line that up incorrectly, right? So we're having to be careful there, but... Probably two years ago, I think, I was before y'all, and I was talking about the creation and the deployment of what we call a community engagement team. That was five, four officers, supported by a sergeant, identifying issues within neighborhoods and communities, and specifically going out and working with the community to address those issues. Unfortunately, about six to eight months ago, we had to fold those officers and that team back into patrol division to, uh, try to maintain that 56. And you can see some of the listed impacts that you can have when you, when you do things like that. There are ANAP investigators, I don't know that I've seen more, uh, more dedicated bunch of individuals that are attacking a problem that continues to, to plague, uh, many of our residents and our community as it is. Uh, I don't want to necessarily get into the numbers tonight, but I can tell you that fentanyl overdoses are significantly increased, that's related to fentanyl, just here in Almanx County in Burlington, are significantly. That's related to fentanyl. Just here in Almanzt County in Burlington, it's significantly on the rise. Um you can only imagine that it's going to frustrate opportunities for investigators to to investigate those things. Patrol and traffic, we, you know, we, for years, we want officers to be proactive, uh but there does come a point in time with limited staff that really our, our, our sole focus and opportunity uh becomes being responsive to crimes in progress and being responsive uh to crisis in progress. And I'll tell you, I don't think this council or the community should have any concerns as it relates to our ability to respond to those things in progress. We are still very well situated to do that, uh but we we should not be hope that our proactivity could be impacted. You heard me speak briefly earlier about the number of detectives that we had, uh probably just as recently, maybe as twenty-four to eighteen months ago. And now we're looking potentially in the next three months to be really fifty percent reduced in that staffing. Uh they continue to be focused, laser focused on the most violent crime, right? The most serious incidents with the highest property values. Those are the crimes that we're having them focus on and will continue to do so. Uh but with any more significant reductions in staff, uh we'll have to continue to adjust and modify either their work schedule, increase over time, mandate over time, uh to meet those needs. I spoke briefly earlier. You heard me talk about the supervisors within the department. It was a part of, as we presented the budget this year, recognizing that retention and recruitment was an issue and the need to, um, you know, really create an opportunity to create some financial opportunity, a little bit of financial. But more than anything, it was just about not having to do a promotion so that we didn't have to create another vacancy on the frontline. You know, I don't like saying that I think somebody that's ready has plans on the shelf. And some of my plans may look at future requests to freeze some of those positions, additional supervisor positions if we had to, certainly not desiring to do that. This is kind of where I started. I want to circle back to this opportunity, right? It's really the, what you're going to hear in the end of this is a, is an ask, obviously, and didn't think that was going to occur. From where I, from where I have a closure of city day to day, recognizing the tenure that I've been there and wanting to see the best outcomes from this police department, we've got to make this work. Somehow, some way, we've got to create an opportunity and adjustment to do this. I feel like we can do that together. The department, like I said, we already said, we see those twenty-four average resignations a year. Uh unfortunately, that's not necessarily a new thing, right? That's not just a quick onset of twenty-four a year. Uh that average has been hovering between twenty-two, twenty-four to twenty in the last five to six years. Uh we talked recent earlier about calls don't go down proportionally with staff, right? You just don't have as much staff or you just don't do as many calls. Well, it doesn't work that way. The phone keeps ringing. We have been asking officers to come in to work overtime. That is a very regular occurrence uh on, on our shifts. Uh some of the training opportunities, especially those that I would say are regional, where we have a chance to send somebody to Charlotte, Mac or down to Raleigh for big training opportunities. Uh those have, have began to suffer, right? Which is need, need uh staffing on the streets. Uh and then here's, you know, you talked about exit interviews. We certainly do those. We pay attention to those. Uh, you know, Sharice, I believe, is already, you know, paying attention to that as well, just like Jamie did when she, when she was here. Uh certainly not saying that this is the only thing, right? Uh but one of the things that we know is that our officers, especially most recently, that are leaving, um describe it, uh describe it as what they call the value proposition. So what does that mean? Basically, what it means in my lending terms is what are they doing for what we're paying? Uh that sounds really, really low, but that's what they're doing. They're evaluating a lot of police agencies in a very tight knit, regional, um they don't want to go to California, right? No, I'm people leaving California. But they're looking at police agencies and they're saying, based on the department, the community itself, the types of crimes that might be occurring in that community, what's the benefits factors? And can I get there from where I live? Or will they let me out there from where I live? Those are the things that we're commonly hearing. I don't, I don't know that I can explain it from a science perspective, right? But I'll tell you, uh because I get asked this very commonly, was every police department suffering through these consequences? The answer to that is, what we, what we found, what ICP found, Perf has also looked at this issue, is it's called mid-level municipal police departments are having the biggest impact, right? Once you get over fifty officers in a police agency, which we're well over that, uh then up to large-sized police officers as well, uh police agencies as well, there is definitely a pinch point in that market, but we have a lot of those similar sized or smaller sized vacancies that were in the state of North Carolina. There are four hundred agencies here in North Carolina. So when you move over to the right side of the slide, you've heard me say multiple times, the goal tonight is to really flip this uh, this trend that's occurring. What we want to do is we want to look to create, create benefits existing current lab salary, right? No, no new dollars, but current lab salary. Whatever we've come to the budget table with in July and what, what was approved, is to be able to create not just a dollar value, not just give us a raise, right? It's not that simple anymore, because we did our homework over the last three or four months, and we evaluated tons of police departments across North Carolina. And nobody's taken that single uh, uh single approach, right? They're getting really, really creative in a lot of different spaces. I've had an opportunity to present uh in recent weeks uh with city manager and finance and city leadership on some of these creative options, uh which we could have additional information for you at the right time if you desire. Business should give us a greater flexibility and provide healthy work-life balance. Talk about those exit interviews. I tell you, I don't even know that I've known that term until about the last five to eight or ten years, but I tell you, it's a real thing. Our officers go home every day evaluating the amount of work they're doing and the amount of time that they have to spend with, with their family or doing other things that they, that are important in life. Each time that you heard me talk about bringing that cop back to work an extra shift or creating uh new, new types of work, that is a real thing. And only through flipping this and over a period of time, through continued adjustment of work, and I didn't say deletion of work, but continued adjustment, adjustment of work, finding new creative ways to get police work done, we can be successful, but it's going to take a combination of all those things. There is a neat idea of what I, I don't think I can claim it, but we've talked about it from months now. It's about creating anchor points within the benefit system, right? Where tendered employees that are here, regardless of their tenure, but if they're here and they're out working on the streets, we've got to have a system that allows us to be created and create anchor points. Much of what we've talked about with the manager and finance are what we call both offensive and defensive strategies. And we, we can bring both of those uh pieces of information together for you if requested. Defensive strategies are, we know it exists, we know somebody's already doing it. Now, now the question is, is where do we match up with whatever benefit they're offering? Offensive, offensive strategies are about creating uniqueness, about creating opportunity for our staff, not necessarily attached to a new dollar. In fact, I'd say that several of our offensive strategies that we've proposed don't come with a new money. I'm not saying they don't come with, without, you know, the CD cost of some type, but it's not to a new dollar. So we'd like that opportunity to discuss those benefits with you as well. You heard me say it, right? And it is just really probably the reality is stats. Uh I don't know, my mother would say that I'm absolutely not great at math. I hear you, uh but I've gotten better over time, right? Uh I don't know why or what led me to being interested in specific stats some years ago. Uh but what I find out is that in most cases, they're pretty, they're a pretty strong tool to use, right? Um but I don't like the fact that stats tell us that it's probably a four and a half year adventure for this department to make, department and the city to make all the right decisions along the pathway to create the balance in the right direction and then continue that balance to get there. Talk briefly about this, so I certainly don't want to, I've heard what Mr. Ward said when we started, so I'm trying to be very timely. Uh y'all, y'all recognize that it does, it's a long hiring path to introduce a new police officer to where they can take that solo call, call by themselves. Uh you've heard this number in prior presentations as well, right? Before, in that first year, before I can even release them off of field training and have them go answer the call. We've got a very conservative eighty-six thousand dollar investment in that employee. Not short on the trend, but certainly the folks that seem to join the police department at times, oftentimes we find them leaving in that first three or four years, five years, ten years period. Part of this about creating those anchor points that will um try to hold, you know, those employees into what I believe is overall a good work environment uh with, with those new anchor points. The retention and recruitment calls, the ask is to use existing dollars, lab salaries that we currently possess through vacancies. Uh propose to make salary adjustments and be creative new benefits, working with the city manager's office, finance and other city leader, HR, other city leaders, leadership to make those appropriate decisions. Has that. You know, what happens now, you heard me say that the community should not be concerned about our ability to respond to crises. We'll always make that commitment regardless of what we have to do, right? Uh that, that's going to continue. But there are real outcomes of the decisions that we make as a police agency moving forward. One choice that I could make could be to reduce the number of officers on patrol. I'm not interested in that quite honestly, and I'll probably put that towards the end of my list because officer safety and community safety are paramount to me. Uh the decisions that I make largely end up being officer safety decision, even if I have to pull someone out of a specialized division. A lot of times those decisions are made through that officer safety lens. Eliminate services. It's not really the police department that I've been a part of for twenty-eight years. I've been a part of the police department that's grown for over twenty-eight years and been blessed to be a part of that. Not only did it grow in the number of officers that we had, right, but it grew in the ability and the capacity of the agency provided public service, and I want to continue that. Further touch specialized positions. We've talked about that, and I recognize the, that probably doesn't need to be talked about a whole lot more, but every opportunity that I have, you've already seen. It's either more detectives, more ANAT investigators, training officer, or SROs. Mandate overtime, right? The officer service will continue. We will only be able to mitigate some of those through creative police practice or implementation. And it really does come down to how many officers are needed for the quantity of calls and for officer safety. If we mandate overtime, certainly I feel like that will have a negative impact on, on morale. And I don't want to have to do that any more than we already had to do that. It's an increase in that, but not being our favorite. Reduce or eliminate training. Extended liability is, are the words that I chose to put out there, right? That's uh the individual liability gets extended up a little to the police officer that's out there doing the tough job that we ask them to do. Certainly, the department gets more exposure to the reduced amount of training. We're very focused right now on trying to maintain every bit of training uh in, in excess of the twenty-four-hour interstate mandate. Uh we're nowhere close to just stopping and doing the twenty-four. But I can tell you, after watching videos, after reading police reports, after uh the outcomes of our youth support committees, the training is the biggest insurance check that we've got and have had now for a long time. And I have no interest really in trying to lose, lose our capacity to conduct that valuable training. Close, Mr. Ward, so we're getting to it. Twenty-three, uh twenty-three projections, uh this would move us into about the March time of next year. Uh once again, speaking about fully trained police officers that are able to answer a call for service, ready to go. Uh we're looking at being with a sixty percent deployment rate or a forty percent reduction, if you want to look at it that way. We're looking at potentially getting to that point if we can create the balance, if we can get the flip, if we don't, aren't able to come up uh with a cumulative answer, which I don't suggest is always just benefits alone, right? That's a whole range of issues that, that we're focused on. And then the recommendation is, I guess it's more in the form of a question, you know, now that you've certainly heard, heard the presentation, I'd be glad to answer any questions and then gain insight into what you would like to see uh the police department either bring back or move forward in a certain direction.
Current vacancies, I mean?
Nineteen, if you're looking for a whole number, and what that means, and let me explain that. It's nineteen positions that I could offer today to a new employee. I have thirteen people in a BLAT class out at ACC. They're doing great, by the way, right? The scores are higher than they've ever been, getting along well, I'm going to continue to monitor that. So I've got thirteen in the BLT that are not deployable solo until sometime around May or June twenty twenty-three. Remember, I froze six positions from supervisory positions, just trying to slow, you know, that bottom team down, not having to pull from the bottom to make those promotions. And then with the projected twelve that I showed you, so it really, it takes the, you know, the addition, I've got in the mirror that said, you want to see all of that display and come up with that. But it's not, it's not just about, I, I can't look at it just as how many of them do I have.
Right.
I have to look at it, how many cops have put on the front, frontline, and we move through a period of time and recognizing that. I've, I've told you that unfortunately, I suspect twelve resignations, retirements, combination of things between now and Christmas, right? Not the best Christmas present. But you can't stop there and stop thinking, because until we create the flip and get away from twenty-four people leaving a year, you got to start planning for the next six months and the next twelve months and the next eighteen months. So I know that's not a direct answer, but I certainly, if that's part of your request, I can get you.
No.
You're thirteen in BLT, you're thirteen with your BLT, that's what basically cover your twelve laws.
Correct.
Men zero tread water.
Yes, sir.
With twenty-five positions hung out there.
Yes, sir.
Could you describe, Brian, what the meaning of the anchor positions, what you're looking at?
Yeah, uh without getting into the specific details of what a new benefit might look like, right? The concept is, when we look regionally, when we look at it, I don't want to get in the name column of other agencies or other departments, right? But when we look regionally, what we see is, it used to be chased about, that was the only conversation on the table. Are you willing to move your start pay from here to? But like, I think it was Peter was saying, right, transformation, things are, are changing so quick. When we took a look about four months ago and we started calling other agencies and figuring out and seeing what was going on, what we found out is, is they are often offering new and creative benefits that didn't exist in other workplaces. I can tell you, regionally, most closely to here, I don't believe any of those have onset yet. Look two counties away from here, or can we, a couple counties away east and west of here, they've been in place now for months, they're already receiving those benefits. Those, when I say anchor point, right, creative benefit or benefits packaged collectively, that when we onboard someone, they know they've got it from this back.
Mr. Man, I'd like to recommend that we hear October eighteenth, see new ideas, period. What we need to do is improve. I'm lucky enough to receive some of the emails that come across, and the job that you guys are doing outstanding work. From the drug overdoses to the shooting, I mean, there's a lot of positive things happening that the general public doesn't know about due to the fact it's not recorded and it's on the newspaper now like it used to be many years ago. So my answer often to you guys, you do a great job in City of Brooklyn.
Thank you. So you're going to use existing budget that's not?
Yeah, anything that we would be able to bring to you or would be bringing forth on that October eighteenth today if you choose to, uh does not include any additional requests for new money. Uh we've already worked with finance and management to identify what's there, uh and we believe we can be very creative and successful using those dollars.
Yeah, because if ultimately, if we use those dollars and we find out we're able to, to flip it, to use your terms, let's flip it from twenty-four to twelve, twelve, twenty-four. Um now we know we've got a formula that works. I, I wouldn't, I don't mind personally adding new dollars to the formula that works. But if we can use existing dollars to create that formula, to figure it out.
So where does that money go back into the general public that's not utilized from the vacancies?
It does.
That's what, yeah.
But I, I do want to thank Chief, and I want to thank Peggy as well for the work that's done on this. Um this has been not something that has happened overnight, but, but um we're addressing it and wanting to bring it to you as quickly as we can. to bring it to you as quickly as we can, but Peggy's done a great job identifying, you know, dollar amount course, and Chief has done a great job in his app of looking at a lot of different policies and a lot of different options. And again, as I said, we want to be a little bit unique, we want to be creative. To get back to something Ronnie said, if you want to talk about the exit interviews, most of those interviews, and we can share that with you, are not about problems or issues with the department, or not about, you know, Chief sucks. It is about specific issues of pay, it's about specific issues, but it had different ones. But we also have a lot of reasons where people leave that they're saying, hey, this is fatal, and this is a great organization, but we're leaving the cost of these other benefits and other opportunities. And as Chief said, if you require me to do more, it's like required over time, and not doing promotions like we should, they have to look at other.
Everything that I've heard on the screen is the workload.
Yeah.
What? The workload.
Yeah.
They get somebody else to make a little bit more money and do less work.
Or maybe not as much money.
Exactly.
But have a lot less work.
Right.
Good on the eighteen?
Yeah.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, Chief.
Thank you, Chief.
All right, next item is boards of commission, of course, we've got more items, I guess, from P and C.
Yes, good evening again. So there were several items that were held by the Planning and zoning Commission at their meeting on September twenty-sixth. I'll just go through them very, very briefly. There were two items that were continued over to a special meeting on October tenth. The first was, let's see, I'm probably not going to get these in order, I will do my best here. The first one was rezoning twenty-two fifteen, shown here on highlighted in the teal hatch. That property is currently zone medium density residential, and the request is to go to general business limited use for multifamily development. The second one is twenty-two sixteen, this is a request to change the zoning from industrial to mixed use, limited use rezoning as well. Those two items are going to be continued over to a special meeting on October tenth. Then there was a third item that was twenty-two seventeen, and it includes all of the properties highlighted here in teal shade, and this was a request to change the zoning from medium density residential and medium industrial to medium industrial with a limited use. At this, this particular item, there were a number of people in the audience, and the applicant indicated that they were going to be holding a neighborhood meeting, and that neighborhood meeting, if I get the dates correct, was going to be on October seventeen. And so the Planning and zoning Commission preferred that the applicant meet with the neighborhood, come back at the October twenty-fourth Planning and zoning Commission meeting, so that's when that item will be continued. So there's no report on you on any action items for those three items, it's just a status update.
So were the other two continuums for public input also?
There was the issue regarding our signage for the properties, so while all of the letters went out, it came to our attention that we needed to repost some of the signs.
Everyone who was there to speak was heard, they just continued over the further public comment period and the vote to this special call.
Right. Any questions on those? Then just really briefly, and I don't really need to go through this whole presentation formally, because you'll see it in a, in a public hearing forum, but the last item was an introduction of some additional text amendments. There were three, three items, and this slide just kind of shows the history of the text amendments that we've gone through over the years. And I'll just go through them very, very, very quickly. The first one was dealing with accessory dwelling units. So accessory dwelling units are existing in the U D O today, or a way to provide additional housing options, and a variety of housing options, as you, as you know. This highlights the use specific standards dealing with accessory structures. So staff is recommending a very minor change. Currently, an ADU cannot exceed thirty-five percent of the finished floor area in the principal structure that exists on the property, and we've had some issues with that number, so we're making a recommendation to increase that from thirty-five to fifty percent. The second change, so there's three, this is the second one, deals with drive-through facilities, and it's essentially making modifications to the standards of outdoor speaking speakers when dealing with drive-through facilities. Currently, the drive-through outdoor speakers have to be at least fifty feet from a residential district, and we're making a recommendation to change that to distance to relate to the structure, residential structure. Where that occurs, the perimeter buffer can also has to include a fence and a wall, regardless of the type of buffer that has to be there. Then the third item is introducing automobile sales and rental in the medium industrial zoning category, and this would be consistent with automobile repairs and servicing, and automobile towing and storage lots that are currently allowed in that zoning district as well. So those are the three items that are part of this, that's why you see me here today as opposed to chat, because these are very small recommendations. But the Planning and zoning Commission recommended in favor of these modifications, and so we're asking for this to be put on the city council agenda for October eighteenth.
Can you real quickly explain this last one, how that relates to existing zoning case in Florida?
Sure, so if you recall, there's the rezoning case on Anthony Road.
Right.
That has come in front of.
Bourbon Trailers, I think it was.
That's right.
Yeah.
So essentially, if this text amendment is approved through city council, that would allow automobile sales and rentals within their existing zoning district, so that would eliminate the need for them to seek the rezoning. So what, so we've been in contact with that applicant in terms of the timing of things. So they will be back in front of the city council tomorrow night, which is October fourth. They've made a request to have the item carried to the October eighteenth city council public hearing date to coincide with these text amendments.
So they were having to reset day, just to be able to get.
That's right.
Yes, which confused me anyway, didn't it?
Right.
So that's how you solve the problem.
Yep.
Would they withdraw then?
They would, yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, because also, so it'll be all four agents, but once they take, so it'll be happening back to back.
Yep, that's right.
I appreciate it, Jen, yours back to you.
Absolutely, that's, that's great.
That's really good work.
Yeah.
That's real bad.
Because that was a penum from all of a sudden, but it didn't make sense, rather we're having to reset, but then it was a penum to a adjacent land that we're representing, so you guys have really solved a significant issue with good research. Thank you.
My question, any questions before I shut this down? I'm just here with a rationale about going fifty percent on the accessory dwelling units.
So we want, we want to encourage a variety of housing types, and accessory dwelling units is one of those options. What we're seeing is that number, the thirty-five percent, thirty-five percent prevents the ability to have conversion essentially, because on some laws. So if you've got a one-story ranch type house that may be under a thousand square feet, but you've got a separate de-tax garage, you have the ability, on the property, let's say, if there's water and sewer and infrastructure in place, you have the ability to have a second ADU, but with that thirty-five percent cap, you really aren't providing, you know, a fair share in terms of a dwelling unit, square footage. So we looked at some of the other examples that are going around, and we feel like the thirty-five percent really does limit that ability to encourage that, the variety there.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you, Jay.
You're welcome.
And our last item, unfortunately, Mr. Goodger out of town.
I'll move you to short, and again, I still appreciate the opportunity to be your city manager, it's been incredible fun two months, and I did thank this staff every day for that opportunity. But one of the things that impressed me as much over the weekend was the work that our public work staff did with respect to Hurricane Ian. And I wanted Gary to be here to kind of talk about what we've done, what the process is, and what the next step is for cleanup. But again, I appreciate the communication from Oregon, and just everybody did an incredible job. I thought social media, everything, making sure that our citizens, police department, fire department were updated and safe this week.
Here in city council, you do a great job too, Ron.
Yes.
Since he's thanking everyone.
I'm thanking everybody, so.
Congratulations.
Transportation.
Sure.
Oh, also, but yeah.
Yeah, that's good, I would like to thank fire and police, a lot of resources, transportation, and all, public work has worked with all of those groups this weekend, it just, it was, it was a combined effort, so appreciate that. This weekend, I guess Friday night and Saturday, one of the streets division, they worked primarily on getting down trees out of the roadway, pushed to the side, several of those trees, they had to cut energy lines, entangling those, really had to wait till they got their work completed, and we went back in and tried to clear those trees out. Streets division, they got most, everything that was, fell in the roadway cleared today. Solid waste, they started out this morning with their Monday collection. The available crews that were there, rest of those guys, they focused on yard waste collection. So at the end of the day, the report was, they were able to finish today's collection and yard waste, they got most of it collected. Starting tomorrow, our streets division will work with solid waste, and they'll go to Tuesday route. Solid waste will be the, is the primary lead, they'll, they'll get the bulk of the yard waste, but streets will come in and supplement that, they'll get the larger debris piles and more time consumed, so the solid waste can keep moving. In about two weeks, cemeteries and grounds was, they will start their normal leaf collection, but we're going to go in and start that a little early now, so we'll go in behind in solid waste. Once they're finished and they're out of the way, we'll have cemeteries and grounds, they'll go in and kind of finish one. There'll be some debris left over that solid waste the streets can't hit, they'll put the bench and touch on. We're only going with that approach for about two weeks. Wednesdays, normally today, solid waste, they catch up on disc garbage from Monday and Tuesday, setting up new cans, new things of that nature, we're going to have those guys on Wednesday focus on yard waste collection. If we don't get everything tomorrow, we'll have Wednesday to help finish the Tuesday route. If Tuesday's route finished, we'll go ahead on Wednesday, have those guys start on Thursday's route. So it sounds like a lot, but I think at the end, you know, in two weeks of this approach, we should have everything cleaned up. And we had a e-waste event scheduled for last Saturday, we postponed it, it will take place on Saturday, October twenty-second, so.
Well, that's awesome, thank you, Gary, your team, and I think, you know, the event's over, but the work really just gets started, so it's hard for people sometimes to understand. Do our, how are we on the power, do we still have, is everybody back on? I know there's one.
I have a big delay.
Okay, just curious. All right, that's all, we've got the agenda, anything else for anybody? David, do you have anything you want to add, anything you could talk on this?
Twenty-one.
Twenty-one. All right. See, we're talking more than I can, thank you.
Okay, you want, okay, I'll shut this down?
Yes, absolutely.